And I will just say that the regular session of today Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, will come to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Scott Benson.
Scott Benson, aye.
Councilmember Fred Durha III.
Present.
Councilmember Letitia Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Gabrielle Santiago Romero. Councilmember Mary Walters.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Woodfield Callaway.
Present.
Councilmember Nicole Mayon II. Council President Pro Tem James Tate.
Here.
And Council President Mary Sheffield. You have a quorum, President, Mr. President?
Thank you, ma'am. We have a quorum, which means we're now in session. We'll start with our invocation, and I believe Dr. Robin Diane, Diane, excuse me, Moore of First Baptist Institutional Church is here in person today. Good morning, and thank you for joining us in person.
Good morning.
And the floor is yours, ma'am.
Let us pray. Spirit of the living God, fall fresh on us. Spirit of the living God, fall fresh on us. We pause on this Tuesday, a day never seen before, a day that will never be repeated, to stop, to pause, and to praise you for who you are. We thank you, O God, for being the author and finisher of our faith, to be in the Alpha and the Omega, a wonderful counselor, a mighty God, the Prince of peace, the King of kings, the Lord of lords, the great I am. We come on this morning to lift up the city of Detroit to you today, a city known for its vibrant energy and diverse communities. We thank you for the city and its leadership that put all their hope and their trust in you. We thank you that you have allowed us to put you first and residents first. We pray for your continued peace that will reign through the streets for unity, to bridge our differences, and for prosperity to flourish in our neighborhoods. Grant us wisdom for our leaders, compassion to our neighbors, and healing to those who are hurting. May the spirit of hope and resilience guide us as we face challenges but yet also celebrate successes. We ask you for your protection over this city and your blessings to flow abundantly upon all who call Detroit home. It is in the name of Jesus that we rebuke and cast out every spirit operating against this city right now and command all adversities to flee in this place in your powerful name. The righteous are claiming this place because we know that no weapon formed against us shall prosper and that every tongue that rises against us shall be shown to be wrong. I declare at this moment that the godly city and the righteous prevails here in Detroit. We command the spirits of poverty and violence, anger and hate, lying and immortality and any wrongdoing to leave this city in the name of Jesus. We plead the grace, the joy, love of Jesus around the city and declare angels are camped all around us. We claim Psalm 91 for our city and we pray for every leader according to 1 Timothy, Chapter 2. We pray for the mayor, we pray for the city council, and all who are in authority. We ask you right now, Lord of the harvest, to send forth laborers in every neighborhood, to let your light so shine through every neighborhood, school, storefront, and church. Let the gospel permeate every part of this city and break through every area of darkness. We thank you, Lord, for revival in this space. We ask that all things come through faith and that assurance that we can do all things through Christ who strengthens us. In the mighty name of Jesus spoken by one who has faith and enough to transform this city, that we expect it, we receive it, and we thank God for it. In Jesus' name, in all that agree, say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Moore. You are welcome to stay with us and certainly see this great presentation that's going to take place right after Madam President allows for that to happen. She is not here.
So I would say that I do need to leave for a funeral.
Okay.
And I scheduled it to come behind this, but to say that I support all of you.
Yes, yes.
May God continue to bless you as you travel through the neighborhoods. Lift up the name of Jesus one more time and watch what God would do because eyes have not seen and ears have not heard what Detroit has in store for each of us.
Yes, amen. Thank you, Reverend Dr. Moore, and thank you, President Pro Tem, for starting off the session. Good morning, everyone, and we will turn it over now to Member Callaway, who has a presentation. Before we do so, for those who are joining us virtually, please make sure you raise your hand. At this time, we will cut off public comment after this presentation. To EPU, if we have anyone that is standing in the hallway, can we make sure they are able to come in just for the presentation? We don't want anyone to feel left out, and so we can maybe try to get people in. We didn't realize it would be this crowded today, so we do apologize. We would have went to the auditorium, but we do want to allow as many people to come in for the presentation. Okay, Member Callaway, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we can have, and thank you so much and good morning, everyone, if we can have someone bring Ms. Steele to the front. And Pastor Moore is my soror. I wanted to greet her especially this morning, but she left before I could say good morning, but she is a precious friend and a soror. So again, thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. This is probably, I've given out quite a few testimonial resolutions since I've been on this council. Some inspire me more than others, but this has been one that has, just reading your bio and all that you've accomplished, Ms. Steele Hughes was just amazing. So it gives me great honor to do so this morning. The Detroit City Council testimonial resolution, Gina Steele Hughes. Whereas Gina Steele Hughes moved to Detroit from Windsor in May of 1984, beginning a remarkable journey that would span 28 years of dedicated service to the Detroit Fire Department. Her calling to serve others was ingrained in her from a very early age. Growing up, she was deeply influenced by her mother, Frida Steele, a dedicated nurse, and her father, Eugene Steele, Ontario's, now listen to this, y'all, Ontario's first African-Canadian firefighter in Windsor. Their commitment to helping others shaped her own path, blending a passion for care and protection that would define her career. Her commitment to the department began in 1986 when she joined the Fire Academy. Through perseverance, sleepless nights, and unyielding determination, Gina graduated at the top of her class, setting the stage for a long and distinguished career. Her early success is a testament to her drive and set the tone for her future. And whereas, after completing her training, Gina's dedication to excellence led her to make history as the first woman adjunct instructor at the Detroit Fire Academy. Her groundbreaking achievement set a precedent for future generations of women in the fire service. Following her time at the academy, Gina worked as a firefighter at engine house number 17, bravely serving the people of Detroit. And whereas, in April of 1988, Gina was detailed to the chemistry lab where she became an evidence technician, an expert witness for arson cases, further demonstrating her expertise and commitment to justice and safety in the city. Her dual role of fighting fires and assisting in investigations marked her as a truly unique asset to the department and to the city. And whereas, in 1989, Gina was assigned to fire operations and later selected to join the research and development department, where she rose through the ranks from lieutenant to chief, dedicating her expertise to the department's success. She also became the first woman to sit on a DFD union committee, paving the way for women in leadership. After 28 years of service, Gina retired as chief of research and development in 2013, leaving a legacy of grit and dedication. Following her retirement from DFD, she pursued a second career as a veterinarian. Just amazing. You're amazing. Retiring in 2021 after caring for animals. And whereas Gina's greatest joy in her life is her family, as a proud mother and grandmother, she embraced the role of grandmother to Amelia Ray Hughes in 2021, joyfully teaching Amelia life lessons, how to swim, sign language, and piano. Yes, Amelia. You're smart. Yes. Despite her health challenges, Gina's strength and unwavering spirit continue to inspire everyone she encounters. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Councilwoman Callaway, the entire city of Detroit council and all Detroiters hereby celebrate Gina Steele Hughes for her years of service, her groundbreaking accomplishments, and her continued dedication to her family and community. God bless you, and we love you, and we appreciate you, all that you've done. Thank you. And we also have a bouquet of flowers for you from the city council. We want to make sure you get those as well. Yes, ma'am. Just hold on, just hold on. So that being said.
Okay, I'm sure she wants to say the words.
Yes, absolutely.
And if we can make sure, make sure her microphone is on. Just press the bottom of it.
We'd like to hear from you.
Yes, please.
Ms. Gina.
I just want to thank you very much. It's hard to be humble when you hear all those things and you're appreciated, and I want to thank everybody, all these peoples behind me are my people. Some flew in, some were from across the border, they got up and come to see this, and I just want to say thank you, everybody. That's my oldest son there, the fellow hiding behind the glass, but I just want to thank everybody for coming and witnessing this. And this is, of course, who are you?
Amelia.
Who are you?
Amelia.
Aww. That's Amelia.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm not sure if colleagues have anything to say. I also see state rep Kavanaugh is here. I see she has flowers as well.
Yes.
So we want to recognize her and thank you for being here. State Senator, I'm sorry, State Senator. Just got that bump up, yes. All right, Pro Tem, I know this is your district when it comes to your deputy district manager.
Deputy District Manager, but it's even beyond that. You know, Gina, we had just a bit of a relationship as we, you know, professionally, over time with my time with the police department, and you have always been just, you know, tremendous. I mean, and look at the, look at the folks behind you. This, we have never, and I'm saying in the times that I've been here, and I'm in year 15 now, I have not seen this type of response for a testimonial resolution in my time here. And I'm looking at Kirwin, and Kirwin's been here longer than me, and he's shaking his head the same way, right? So that shows that impact. And as I mentioned, you know, though Steele is the deputy district manager in District 1, as I said, we have a great relationship. It's more than just the relationship from a professional standpoint. You've raised a great young man.
Yes, he has.
Yeah. And that bond began even prior to him joining the city of Detroit. So when he came on this side, I knew that he was going to continue that legacy of public service that you started, and he's doing so in such a magnificent way. He's touching people in ways that it is just amazing to see his growth over time. And he had run for office before, and it was a little challenging, but now he's here and able to make that true impact, the impact that he's looking to make, and I'm looking forward. I'm going to say it right now, I'm looking forward to those years where he is, you know, Senator, he is state rep, whatever it is, because he's putting in the work, and he's got it in his DNA. So, and then Amelia, look at her, not ashamed, not afraid of anything. So I know it's, again, passing down through the, through the bloodline and the DNA. So just thank you for, for all of your service in the city of Detroit. Thank you for your heart and your soul. We love you, we are here with you, we support you, and whatever we can do along this journey, we're going to make sure we do it for you and with you. God bless you. God bless you. God bless you.
Member Durha.
Thank you. And first, good afternoon to you, or good morning to you, I'm sorry. Just wanted to say thank you. Obviously, a tremendous amount of affection for you. You served in the time of even when my dad was there, and you guys were running around here. I was, well, actually, probably, I was running around here as a little kid, but I always remember him saying, you want to meet somebody tough and sweet? And that's you, someone who has sacrificed so much here for the residents of the city of Detroit, dedicating your life to public service, and oftentimes, folks don't appreciate that enough, the sacrifice away from your kids, the sacrifice away from your family, and you caring for other people's families, particularly during tough times here in the city of Detroit. When we talk about being on the fire department, I mean, it's just absolutely amazing. So I'm glad you got your flowers today because really, we owe a lot, a tremendous amount to you. So we love you, and obviously, this young man, as Pro Tem has stated, is the future. I think that's what we all live for, to be able to pass on to the next generation those values and the importance of public service. So thank you for even doing that. God bless you.
We appreciate you so much, and I don't know if this is inappropriate or not, but I think all of us here together, we should put a scholarship together for other young women who are aspiring to achieve what you've achieved. We can talk about it offline, but I'm just planning to seed here because all these people, we can come together and put a scholarship together named the Gina Steele Hughes Scholarship. And I think we can do that, right? I think we can do that. That's the least that we can do. How we do that, I don't know, but all these good minds here, we can, I think we can do that. So I'm going to leave that up to your son. I'm sure we can work on it together. You have my information. I'd like to work with you on that, okay? And again, thank you so much. I don't know if you want to say anything through the chair.
Yes.
I'm not going to talk. I want to say thank you. This is a weird space for me, you know, in these arenas, we wear the masks of what this job and title. I'm sitting here today as a father and a son, so I don't want to, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, to thank you all for honoring my mother, to everybody who came, thank you as well, who traveled. You lived an amazing life. You are loved, and in my opinion, you're too humble, accomplished a lot, and it's important that you stand on what you've been able to get accomplished, mom. So just thank you all. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you.
And I need to say this to you, young man. God talks about children who honor their parents, and you've done that today.
Yes.
You've honored your parents, and God said he'll make your life long on earth when you honor and obey your parents, and you've demonstrated that obedience and that honor and love and respect and reverence for your mom, and I know you're passing it on to your daughter. So God continue to bless your life richly, and may he make his face shine upon you and give you all the desires of your heart, and that's from my heart to yours. Amen?
So if you don't mind, we'll come down and do pictures with you, Ms. Steele, and your, and your family? Okay? All right.
Thank you. Sunglasses, get on.
All right, thank you again, Councilmember Callaway, for the presentation for Ms. Gina Steele Hughes. We appreciate that and to all that came down, beautiful presentation. And we will now proceed back to our agenda. The Journal of the Session of Tuesday, March 25th, will be approved, there being no reconsiderations or unfinished business. We will proceed to the Budget, Finance, and Audit Standing Committee. For the Budget, Finance, and Audit Standing Committee.
Seventy-five reports from various C departments.
The seventy-five reports will be referred to the Budget, Finance, and Audit Standing Committee. For the Internal Operations Standing Committee.
Four reports from various C departments.
The four reports will be referred to the Internal Operations Standing Committee. For the Neighborhood and Community Services Standing Committee.
Five reports from various C departments.
The five reports will be referred to the Neighborhood and Community Services Standing Committee. For the Planning and Economic Development Standing Committee.
Five reports from various C departments.
Madam President?
Yes.
Line item 10.1 actually should be sent to, it is a GSD contract, so it should be sent to Neighborhood and Community Services, not PED.
Okay, the clerk with note.
Exust note.
Thank you.
All right. So the four reports will be referred to the Planning and Economic Development Standing Committee. For the Public Health and Safety Standing Committee.
Twenty reports from various C departments.
The twenty reports will be referred to the Public Health and Safety Standing Committee. We will now move to the Voting Action Matters under Other Matters.
There are no items, Madam President.
Under Communications from the Mayor and other governmental officials and agencies.
There are no items, Madam President.
All right, we will call now for public comment, and we have roughly 50 total residents, and so we're going to do for now, we're going to do a minute for public comment, and public comment is now cut off as well. The clerk with note, we've also been joined by Member Young and Member Santiago Romero.
Clerk with so note.
All right, starting with Ms. Barbara Beasley. Let's just make sure your microphone is on. One second, we're going to make sure your microphone is on.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate this opportunity to share on behalf of District 3 and a number of residents who have significant health issues because of the Cronos Cement Facility. We have had wonderful support from our EPA coming out of Chicago, visiting us, supporting our efforts to ensure public health. However, as you know, they've, they're gone. We need you, we really need you, to be supportive of people living in areas with industrial pollution, toxic dust. There are many, many families in my community with young children who are particularly susceptible to diseases and having their lungs harmed because of toxic dust. There is noise, the situation, those who live in that environment find it unbearable. So please vote in our support. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. All right, Ms. Moore?
Hello. This is the third time that I've been made homeless due to the system. The first house I was in, I was supposed to buy at 5285 Three Mile Drive. Then they put me in the, I was homeless for some years on the street. Then they put me in the second faulty house and the third faulty house, and then I had somebody who was supposed to be helping down here, they had to never tell me, oh, you picked them, what you do, that's on you. That's not right to me because I'm not an inspector. The inspector that came out, he had filled the house, and I told them I did not want it. They tell you, you got to give them a chance. Why do you have to give anybody a chance to sit up and do, re-inspector house when you, when you hear the inspector saying it's failed? I didn't want it, but they told me I had to have, that I had to give them a chance, and that's not fair to me. I'm homeless now, and I moved my stuff out, and I'm trying to find somewhere to go. I'm here and there, and it don't make no sense that I'm going through this again, a third time due to the system. It's ridiculous that I'm constantly going through this. I'm in the buying program, I'm trying to do everything that I'm supposed to do, but I'm being the one who railroaded.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore, and while you're here, let's make sure we connect you with the appropriate people to ensure we can get housing and assistance for you, Ms. Moore. Okay? Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Sharon Buttry?
Are you able to hear me?
I can't tell if that microphone is on.
There we go, I think that's right. Good morning, honorable council members. My name is Reverend Sharon Buttry. I'm a board member with the Detroit Hamtramck Coalition for Advancing Healthy Environments, and I live about a mile from the Crown Cronos Concrete Mixing Plant at 3405 Gaylord, and we're here today asking you to shut it down. This 43-acre site in District 3 does not belong in a residential neighborhood. Crown Enterprise destroyed the Sunnyside Neighborhood. to create this environmental tragedy. The dust, noise and truck traffic created by this company make unbearable living conditions. Silica dust is a result of concrete mixing and causes silicosis, which is a deadly disease. Many residents are elderly and many are too sick to be here today to testify in person. Hundreds of the residents nearby are legacy Detroit homeowners and many are new immigrant families trying to create a good life for their children. And what about the children? We believe public health is your responsibility and your response today is about life and death for these children. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Benson?
I'll respond.
Yeah. Okay, so just for those who are coming in to speak on that topic after you all are done with your comments, Member Benson, who represents that district, will like to respond. So we're not ignoring you all, we're going to hear from you first and then we'll respond after we get through public comment. Okay, so thank you for coming down. Ms. Crawford?
Yes, I'm a resident over there near the Kronos. I've been, last year I've had three sinus infections due to the air over there. So, you know, I got a big garden going on. Y'all talking about the Greenway coming in and then over there that way where my neighborhood is. It doesn't make sense to promote health with the Greenway and then the Kronos is killing everything. So you need to move it, it needs to go.
Thank you, thank you for coming down.
Yeah.
David Byrd?
Yes, my name's David Byrd. I own a commercial property which I'm restoring the area, but I also have a connection with the neighborhood and neighboring people. My background is environmental chemistry. In particular, I deal with water quality, air quality issues and how it affects individuals and what they call the exposure limits for individuals. In this particular neighborhood, there's five children I know of that are within a hundred feet of this emissions point. There's several elderly people in this same neighborhood. And the reason I mention that is the plant produces silicon. Silicon is similar in terms of what it does into the lungs as asbestos. Similar to asbestos, you can't remove it from your lungs once it's there. And what we're talking about are invisible particles, about two to ten microns, which is like one hundredth the size of a normal human hair. So we can't see this. This is a health concern and is concerned with respect to the home properties in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Mr. Shelton, followed by Mr. Cousin?
Yes, Malik Shelton. There needs to be an emergency housing and homelessness crisis declared in this city. Also, I took a ride in an EMS truck, it was a nightmare. It was like going through a gauntlet. There also needs to be an investigation about the condition of these EMS trucks. People are going into these trucks, these EMS trucks to go to the hospital, some of them have suffered all kinds of trauma, gunshot wounds, stab wounds, car accidents. I have, that was the worst ride I've ever been in my life. I could feel every rock, every crack, every crevice in the streets. It was a nightmare, it was an outrage. Also, Mary Sheffield, answer this. Why isn't City Charter Section 7-201 being followed? You have this memo about health that I read. A lot of your questions could have been answered if the City Charter Section 7-201 is being followed. No one wants to say anything about it, it's not being followed. I can't get an answer from anyone.
Mr. Shelton, I will look into that particular section that you're referencing, I don't have it in front of me. And I'll make sure, I know you email and call our office that we respond to it.
Please investigate these EMS trucks.
Okay.
They're a nightmare.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shelton. We will move to Mr. Cousin.
Hello. Firstly, I want to shout out Brother Cunningham for his continued work in the community. Also, I want to elaborate on the last conversation I had about D-Dot. I actually had a pleasant experience with a operator by the name of Dana. And it just brings me to just say that, you know, we should definitely give them more incentives, maybe like gift cards or something, you know. She greeted everybody with a smile and she didn't like leave anyone behind and she definitely made everyone's day. Thirdly, I want to commend you, Ms. Sheffield, for standing up for Charles Brooks with the whole land bank situation. You know, like I said before at the last meeting I spoke at, they're violating people's constitutional rights by sending out goons, taking people's property without giving them their right to due process, which every citizen of America is entitled to. So hopefully, you know, we can stop all these illegal seizures. Hopefully sometime this week.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Cousin.
Madam President?
Yes, Member Waters?
Thank you. Good morning, Sarah, thank you for coming out to speak. We have in place what we call a nuisance abatement program. It allows the land bank too often to go after private property owners. And yes, I'd like to see it gone. Thank you, Madam President.
Ms. Betty Lyons? Yes, Ms. Betty Lyons?
I beg to differ, you are ignoring us. I have come over here for over a year and I still have no answer to where that over $600 million of overpaid property taxes, there's no answer. Yet go to Mexican Town and he brags about millions of dollars and how he's so proud. Well, he needs to answer our questions. He needs to be here. And for that presentation today, why wasn't he here? That was an insult and disrespect. And where is that lawyer? Who, what's his name, Conrad Mallett? He needs to investigate Dugan, but he seems to be under Dugan's thumb as well and only does what Dugan says. And I thank you, Ms. Callaway. There's some questions I wish I could ask, but thank you.
Ms. Lyons, Melissa Love?
Good morning. To whom it may concern, I, Melissa Love, did not vote November 2020 or August 2024 election. And y'all know I did not vote. And I won't be silenced, injustice will be served. If it's God's will, the truth will be exposed, even while y'all silent. There is hope in God and I will continue to fight for my identity back. Until the truth get exposed. Y'all corrupted officials are the reason Detroit has been suffering lack of resources and living in poverty, generation after generation. All glory to God for meeting Ramon Jackson. If it wasn't for me to meet him, I'd be in the dark getting robbed with no gun. The exposure first will happen in the spirit. Now the exposure has been exposed in the physical. If I was y'all, I'd be quiet too. I always stood in my truth and I won't be stopped now. God said vindication is here and it's time for the righteous to win. Whatever happens in the dark will come to light and the light have arrived.
Thank you. Erin McCuskey, followed by Ms. Williams, followed by Mr. Foster.
Good morning, Council. The solar neighborhoods are not on the agenda today, but I'm still here. Crown Enterprises with the concrete crushing plant own 21 acres. Surprisingly, that's the same amount that you guys need for a solar neighborhood. Wouldn't that be great to not have to rezone a residential area? You could actually maybe not issue permits for concrete crushing, put solar on that site that's already there. Ms. Sheffield, I think it's really important to know where you stand with the solar neighborhoods. You voted against it, you voted for Phase Two and then you voted against the funding for the nine homes that were purchased last week. I'd like to also mention, the notice of just compensation came out for Phase Two, $3,500. It was $2,500 per lot for Phase One. There's only been an increase of less than 1,000 homes added to the data that's being analyzed. The only way to increase $1,000 by adding less than 10% of homes is if the average sales price is $10,000 per lot. It's basic math and CFO, even the new CFO should know that.
Thank you so much. Ms. Williams?
Good morning. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this is for you, Madam President. I just found out recently that Detroit Police Department, they are recruiting officers that's been in prison. Illegal false identification. You all are, they are creating a new identity for these people. It's very unfortunate if somebody go to prison and then you give them a new identification, a new ID to become a police officer. And it's a lot of people that's on these forces, Detroit Police Department and Fire Department do not have citizenship, but they created them new identities. Social Security cards, birth certificates, driver's license. They are on the Detroit Police Department and the Fire Department. I've been saying this for a long time about officers that live in these facilities and with these fake identifications and fake IDs, fake everything that's on the force.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Foster, followed by Whitney Clark?
Good morning, Senator President. Just first thing, we're getting close to elections here. You have to have some debates and other things to present in front of the people so that folks will have an opportunity to know what and make informed decisions on their votes. Secondly, I come down here quite a bit. I appreciate city council making themselves available to listen to complaints. But the Constitution says that people have a right to redress, petition government for redress of grievances. Redress means remedy or set right an undesirable unfair situation. Remedy or compensation for a wrong or a grievance. Grievances are formal complaints about perceived wrongs or violations of policies. Complaints are informal expressions of dissatisfaction or concerns. We, or I'm simply asking that you are putting in process and place a grievance process for the people to petition government. Appreciate you all.
Good morning. I just wanted to come down again, my name is Whitney Clark. I'm a resident here in District Five and just continue to speak truth to the issue that we're facing here in housing in the city. And so I wanted to just continue to raise that and try my best to connect those dots as to how these are all intertwined. The solar farms, we're talking about the overtaxation, we're talking about landlords not being held into compliance. We're talking about corporate ownership of single-family homes, which is one of the reasons that the, you know, everyday workers are being priced out of the housing market. We're talking about education that does not prepare our children to be competitive out of high school. And so these are all connected and intertwined. And so I pray and hope that all of these different coalitions, organizations come together during this time because it appears as though we only are heard, we only have power when we come together. There is common ground and there is overlap with a lot of our concerns, so thank you again.
Good morning, Council. I want to say thank you, guys. I'm Joanne Manny, the owner, one of the owners of Granny Farm, a small grow marijuana growth facility in Detroit. Want to give a few thank yous out today. Want to especially give a thank you out to President Pro Tem James Tate, who spearheads the initiative for marijuana in the city of Detroit. He's been doing an awesome job. And as a matter of fact, we would not be in business if it wasn't for Councilmember Tate because initially we were denied our application to build a facility. After speaking to President Pro Tem James Tate and he looked at all of our documents, he made a call for us to have a meeting before the Board Planning Department. And once we presented our information, we were approved. Want to give a thank you out to Councilmember Scott Benson. We're in his district. Also want to thank Councilmember Mary Waters and Coleman A. Young because when they first came on, it was a law presented before them. They did not vote until they were more informed about the marijuana situation. Thank you, guys, for doing an awesome job up there.
Good morning, can you hear me? Yes, this is Aziz Khankar. I am 84-year-old attorney. I have lived in your district for 55 years. I used to own the old packet complex until Mr. Kwame Kilpatrick took it away. That's a long story. But to make it short, I am here to present my book to you and I'm one book short. I already passed it around. This is a 14,000-year history of the British, of the history of the inventions and contribution of all the intellectuals of the world. And you will see that I have not found white supremacy in any of the places other than the colored people. They're the ones who invented most of it. So this is a book that describes how the British Empire used Bengal as a place to produce opium and sold opium throughout the world and including China, and they made billions. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. I'll be seeing you soon. I have other things to talk about your campaign. Have Ms. Victoria contact me, thank you. Thank you. Thank you again.
Yeah, I'm down here about two things. This jobs and amenities development assemblage, where the seven lots behind the four houses I control over on New Bern have been moved at the land bank. And my understanding is by a call by Michael Edward Duggan, the mayor of the city of Detroit. Now I just left him downstairs and I stayed one block away from the Kronos facility. We down here today to demonstrate that we want that place to be shut down. Not, they got to leave, they didn't give us no public notice. The day was going to be there, they just popped up to start. They got the whole block. And I hear his plans for a concrete crusher. Now we got trucks running all up and down the pedestrian streets, residential streets. The kids out there playing, I done took pictures and videos of it. Now we need to have this situation dealt with. And then I need to find out about this jobs and amenities development assemblage that all the people I talked to downtown, I mean downstairs on the 11th floor, they don't know Jack Sugar Honey Ice Tea about it. Do any of y'all know anything about it?
Mr. Crowley, I tried to let you go over a tad bit to finish your statement, but that's your time, sir.
What do y'all know anything about the property? Or the program?
To work with you, Mr. Crowley.
Or the project?
Andrew Bashi?
Hey, my mother want a garden back there.
Mr. Crowley, Mr. Crowley.
I thought I was next.
I'm sorry, Dante, followed by Andrew Bashi, you're correct.
Skip over young people, especially from your district. Good morning, I want to talk about Kronos. That crushing factory is very terrible in that neighborhood. It's creating toxic dust. I also want to talk about, even though you stepped out, James Tate's office. I emailed his office twice about this park bench for a mother who has a murdered son who would do giveaways in this park, Oakfield Park, in District One. I feel like that's kind of ridiculous. I also want to talk about, even though this is not a council matter, but it's still a city of Detroit matter, the land bank. Specifically about the nuisance and abatement program and the fact that the ombudsman's office in 2019 reproduced a report that said that the nuisance abatement program should not be going after Detroiters like Charles Brooks, who has revitalized a neighborhood that was dilapidated. And specifically Ray Solomon going out and going at this man, telling him he needs to have a development plan and needs to have a timeline, which is ridiculous. I feel like that's very unbecoming. Also, the city of Detroit's social media department has been very, very unbecoming and very rude on the internet. They're weaponizing that department. Also, I want to say, I'll be emailing all of your offices about different issues in all of your districts, even the at-large members. I feel like I don't get a lot of responses when I come here. So I'm going to start sending emails. I'm going to follow up on these emails publicly and I'm going to make sure I'm saying what I said emails.
Okay, thank you so much, Dante. Bashi?
Good morning, Andrew Bashi. I'm a staff attorney with the Great Lakes Environmental Law Center and I represent residents in the area of McNichols and Conant, where Crown Enterprise owned by the Maroon family operates the Kronos Concrete Facility. I'm speaking today to urge immediate action in this area. Specifically, three things. I'm speaking today to urge immediate action in this area, specifically, um, three things. One, initiate the process to downzone the area from M4. Uh, deny any request to, uh, by Crown to acquire the roadways in the community that would allow them to drastically expand the impact of their facility. Um, and also to create a development plan worthy of residents. We want a plan that aligns with nearby Banglatown, Joe Louis Greenway, and iconic businesses like the original Buddy's Pizza. Your predecessors, your predecessors and actually some of you on this council have enabled this situation. Um, gave the Maroons almost 140 parcels in that neighborhood as part of the Chrysler plant swap. It's time to do right by the residents of this community.
Thank you so much. All right, and Mr. Cunningham?
Good morning, everyone. That number was made so you can remember it. And on Facebook, not enemy, two words, not enemy. Um, I want to thank both folks for the bus tickets, uh, council members, um, say they're gonna do something later on, but the people, um, the buses are lackluster and, um, it just brings them a little bit of joy if their buses a half an hour late or, or what have you. It just brings joy to, uh, the people. Um, and I want to ask everyone on the sound of my voice to ride the coaches, no matter if you're just a little person like me or maybe someone of stature. Um, I'm, I would love to ride the coach, which I've been doing that with candidates and also not just candidates, we're doing so with elected officials. And I'd like to continue to do that. Uh, just do it on your own. I know that Councilwoman Gabriela Santiago Romero be on the bus, uh, often, getting to work and things. So I admire that and I think that's a good thing. Also with Councilmember Dear Hall, maybe we can still do that, that second, uh, ride along. The first one was good. So just reach out, everybody, keep me in prayers, I'll keep y'all in prayers. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Always good seeing you. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Pleasure, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that would be all of the in-person. Um, I'm not sure, Mr. Benson, did you want me to turn it over to you now? Online, too? Okay, I just didn't know if some of the people here may leave because we have about 30 or 40-plus hands online. Okay, okay. So just, okay, I just, you know, okay.
All right, and thank you for that. And so I want to make sure that everybody understands that my office has been engaged in this process for a number of years now. So it's, also it's very clear, it's, it's critical that we have the facts when it comes to the history of the Kronos plant. The Kronos plant, which is located in the M4 district, a historically M4 district, which directly abuts residential, which is not an optimal, uh, situation. And so my office has been working to downzone in the city of Detroit property, residential properties that are abutted by heavy industrial because what it does, it gives you the right to pollute next to a residential neighborhood, which is what you see going on now. But it is critical that people understand that Kronos is there because the city of Detroit, the administration, Mayor Duggan, cut a deal when we did the Jefferson North plant to trade property. So this was not a city council deal, this was a city of Detroit deal that was cut on the 11th floor. I want to make that very clear. And so Kronos opened illegally in 2023. My office worked with B.C. to shut them down. So we're very aware of what's going on with that plant. But unfortunately, a concrete crusher is a by right use in an M4 district, which is why it's critical that we downzone property, M4 zone property that abuts residential. So you don't have situations like this. As was correctly identified, the Joe Louis Greenway now runs along this area by bifurcating the Kronos plant from other residential and other industrial uses as well as institutional uses like Second Ebenezer. Currently, we've been, we've requested a downzoning for all M4 property that abuts residential and abuts the Joe Louis Greenway citywide. The first opportunity to do any downzoning will be done in this area and we are currently meeting with stakeholders. So I want to make it very clear, this is not new to us. We are very aware of this in the third district and we have shut the plant down when it was operating illegally, but unfortunately, it is a by right use. We are currently meeting with the stakeholders and if you have these type of concerns and issues, you should also direct this to the administration, which put the deal together to have a concrete crusher in the neighborhood. Right now, City Council is dealing with it. We are dealing with it on the legislative side as far as entitlements and zoning and we are working to downzone heavy industrial uses that abut residential citywide and we've done that successfully and we continue to have meetings with stakeholders in that area now. And so I appreciate everybody coming out today, but I do want to make sure you are armed with the facts and the timeline of how we have been engaging and working through this process. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Benson. Discussion, Member Santiago Romero?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you too, my colleague, Member Benson. Would you happen to know if they have a fugitive dust plan that has been approved by B.C. yet?
So that is a question that will need to be asked to the administration.
Okay.
I do not know that answer that question.
Mr. Washington, Madam President, if we can ask Mr. Washington if we can have someone from the administration confirm whether or not they have a fugitive dust plan because if not, that is a very easy way to shut them down because you must have a plan in order to be able to conduct business in the city.
Mr. Washington, can you, are you on?
Madam Chair, yes, um, could you please repeat the request? I heard fugitive dust plan?
Yes, go ahead, Member Benson.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Washington, this is Councilmember Santiago Romero, asking if you wouldn't mind getting someone from B.C. to confirm whether or not Crown has a fugitive dust plan. I know that B.C. has been going around to different businesses that produce fugitive dust. This one absolutely does. So we want to confirm whether or not they have a plan.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll reach out now and try to have, um, a response by the end of public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, so we will now proceed with public comment.
Good morning, Madam President. Uh, there were roughly 30 hands raised before you had called public comment. The first caller is phone number ending in 169.
All right. Caller 169, good morning. Caller 169, good morning. All right, if we can come back to caller 169, please.
Uh, the next caller is Alexi S22Ultra.
Good morning.
Yes, good morning.
You know what's sad? I've been coming down there for years talking about the fumes over here at, on Chrysler and we upheld all these fumes. Now, everybody else is ju, uh, on the bandwagon talking about the fumes over there where they stay, but nothing was done. We upheld all these fumes, my city council, Letitia Johnson, and yes, I do have your phone number and I done doubted. Uh, uh, getting nothing done over here about that. You know, it's sad that everyone else can, uh, uh, complain about their fumes, but I've been coming down there and none of y'all done nothing about it over here where we live at. We upheld it, we got, we got sick behind it, we got problems that's going on and all of a sudden they want to say we fixed it. Yeah, you fixed it after we done got sick? We don't know if that's gonna cause cancer for us, but y'all done shut them down and y'all let Duggan make plans and get money and then push stuff in our community and say the hell with us after we been here paying taxes.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Mr. Holloway, thank you for acknowledging that the issue has been addressed. Um, and we did get an additional $3.3 million in home repair, um, to help with keeping the environment from coming into your home. Uh, and so, you know, this is something that I inherited when I got here. Uh, it has always been a focus of mine to do everything that I could to help the residents in that area and we will continue to. Uh, we are now working with the Health Department to look at a health assessment for residents in that immediate community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, our next caller, please.
Uh, next caller is Miko A. Williams.
Miko Williams, good morning.
Yes, hi, good morning. Um, I was on the Zoom looking at your budget proceedings and I have to admit, um, in address Mr. Coleman Young, that you may want to be careful what you say in the presence of hot mics, just period, because your comments yesterday are a little concerning. Also, Scott Benson, you say that we can't have a escalate thinking attitude with Jeep Liberty thinking. That is very offensive as you always been a corporate sellout for years. You can fix that crock, uh, that, that crusher plant and you can regulate them. Stop giving us excuses. And to this council, we have asked you, I, I know I've been asking you for a youth budget and you just won't do it. You don't listen to the people. Obviously, you are influenced by others and it needs to be a clean sweep like an enema performed throughout that body. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Miko Williams.
The next caller is Kevin Westbrook.
Mr. Westbrook, good morning. Mr. Westbrook?
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good morning, hi. I called in to say I appreciate Council President Mary Sheffield. One, thank you for such great, excellent attendance. You show up to work on time, punctual every day. Thank you so much for that. Citizenship, your positive contribution to the city and community is outstanding. Thank you for such, uh, uh, great leadership and your citizenship is outstanding. Sounds like report card, it, it should be. Your performance is so proficient. Her leadership, champion of people, champion of progress, champion of prosperity, but your performance is so proficient that yesterday, I just want to say, her leadership during the budget hearings showed while Wall Street was screaming and hollering because they didn't know what to expect when those tariffs came, she sat there with a balanced budget for this city. Her performance is so proficient and, and it's only a minute ago, but, I mean, a minute, but the details, I'm for you, keep up the.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Westbrook.
The next caller is Mrs. Mayberry.
Mrs. Mayberry, good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Everyone, I would just wanted to speak about the flag to be, is, is it still gonna be flown on, uh, Flag Day or will we have it on Juneteenth Day? If not, I, I would like to know because I would like to have, um, the people of the city of Detroit to be informed on, on that. Also, I would like to know, um, President Mary Sheffield, um, they haven't broke the ground on the Martin Luther King Memorial Park. I would like to know if it's gonna be done, uh, over the summer months and, and so forth. I know it's gonna take some time. And also, I would like to know if we could have, uh, every drive-through restaurant in the city of Detroit to have a trash can so that people can dr- drop ca, their trash in those barrels so that our city can stay a little cleaner. I'm tired of all the litter, especially because I live on a busy street and, uh, they just drop trash.
Thank you so much, Ms. Mayberry, and we will get the status of the park. Um, and are still working with the administration on the Juneteenth, uh, events that are forthcoming. Thank you, Ms. Mayberry. And we do have someone on from B.C. to give an update on the fugitive dust. So let's pause really quick for public comment. And Mr. Washington, who do we have on? Mr. Washington? You see him on? Okay, Mr. Washington, are you there? Okay, so let's, uh, come back again. Yes?
I, Mr. Washington mentioned Crystal Rogers should be on from B.C. to speak on this. If she's on, we can move her over.
You see Crystal Rogers? Okay, we will promote Crystal Rogers.
Okay, uh, Ms. Rogers needs to accept the promotion to panel. Oh, she just did.
Okay. Good morning. Yes, Crystal Rogers, good morning.
Good morning. Uh, I'm sorry, I've missed the question.
Member Santiago Romero?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, good morning, this is Member Santiago Romero. Uh, we have a number of residents from the third district complaining about fugitive dust coming from Crown, uh, the, the Crown plant and, uh, wondering if they have a fugitive dust plan. Uh, we passed this ordinance to mitigate the, the dust that we have in our industry throughout the city and wondering if they have an approved plan?
Yes, they do.
Hmm.
Um, and to my knowledge, they are, they are operating within, you know, within the current ordinances. They, um, yeah, I'm sorry, they do have a plan. We have reviewed it and accepted it. Uh, we will continue to work with them to reduce emissions.
Oh, you're working with them to reduce emissions, meaning that they currently are producing a number of emissions?
I have not been able to substantiate any emissions when we have gone for inspections.
Understood, okay. Um, thank you. Uh, through you, Madam President, to Member Benson. Um, we can work through something through committee, whatever you would like. Uh, this is just very close to my heart given we've got a Maroon concrete facilities in, in, in Southwest and very much want to make sure that we have healthy communities across the district. So not sure what I can do, Member Benson, to help, but they have an approved plan.
Number Benson?
So through yourself, Madam Chair, and thank you for that, uh, Madam Chair for PHS. And so we continue to work through this. This is why we have been so adamant about downzoning when it comes to heavy industrial next to residential for this very reason. And so we know there is more attention on this and so we continue to work through this. They've been shut down before for non-compliance and if there is continued non-compliance or non-compliance in the future, they will be shut down again. But we continue to work through the process. And so unfortunately, that process is not always immediate, often, often it rarely is immediate, but we continue to work through it and we're in the downzoning process now. So we will come back to our colleagues when we need support and help, but we have to get through the process and meet the stakeholders to get to the point where we can make recommendations. And we do know that there is gonna be a request for, uh, street closures in the near future and an expansion. So we are well aware of what's going on and how to handle this to ensure that the, uh, public health, safety and welfare of our residents are prioritized.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Member Benson. Um, last thing that I'll share is I know that when we passed the fugitive dust ordinance, there was a desire to do more. Um, and I know that we needed the equipment to be able to do so. I'm grateful that B.C. is working on, um, air monitors and making sure that we have the equipment to do such monit- monitoring better. Uh, so this is good to know. Thank you, folks, for coming down, for letting us know what's going on because now we get to go back and look at our ordinances as well and try to make those stronger. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, discussion. Member Benson?
And through, and I'm asking my staff to get contact info, especially contact info for any residences that live in that area, but if there's a leader of the group that came down today, like to get that information as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for coming and we will continue to work with, uh, Member Benson. Okay, we can go back to our public comment.
Excuse me, um, Madam President?
No, I'm sorry, yes.
I would like to encourage our residents, if they, uh, see fugitive dust, they can report it at the email address of dust@detroitmi.gov. That's D-U-S-T@detroitmi.gov as well as calling the phone number 313-628-9994. Again, that's 313-628-9994. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Okay, all right. We will go back now to our public comment.
The next caller is Tahira Ahmed.
All right, go right ahead.
Yes, this is Tahira Ahmed with the Coalition for Property Tax Justice. We, we demand City Council justice systemic overassessment of properties worth less than $50,000 by passing a resolution asking that Wayne County Treasurer Eric Sabree halt the foreclosure of homes worth less than, uh, $50,000. In February 2025, the University of Chicago released a study analyzing Detroit's 2025 assessment at RHO and they found that the city continues to illegally inflate the value of the lowest value homes. We want to also, Eric Sabree, to extend. We want to also, Eric Sabree, to extend the deadline for the foreclosure refund. If you were, if you were, uh, foreclosed for taxes in twenty twenty before, uh, after twenty twenty, oh, before twenty twenty, you are entitled to a refund. You can call eight three three four two one eight one two three, and today is the deadline. So pick up your reparations today or get, this is a form of reparations.
Hey, thank you.
The next caller is We See You.
We See You, good, good morning.
Good morning, and through the chair may I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Uh, no, Ms. Tahera is not reparations. It's following the law. Um, I hear, I hear a lot at the table, and my, my attention has been turned to you, Mr., uh, Councilman Benson. Um, you all sit at this table and I watch you daily change ordinances around to, uh, businesses. You need to get with, uh, the, the planning department and ask them, how did they plan this? And did they change the ordinance or the designation after this was planned? Um, the, the woman who came in, Ms. Rogers, the question to her is, where is the plan, uh, Councilman Benson? And what are the numbers? Because if I'm seeing the dust, the monitors absolutely pick up the dust. And you were told by the state that they have monitors that are all around the neighborhoods that you could use. You didn't have to spend any money. You could have gotten numbers from them. We need to see numbers from Ms. Rogers and the plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next caller is Stephen Hawrie.
Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Awesome. So, you know, like a lot of transit activists, I'm disappointed, you know, we weren't able to get the sixteen million, but at least satisfied we could get, uh, twenty million from the mayor's office. You know, I feel like, you know, the, I, I, I have a lot of respect towards the double D dot campaign, don't get me wrong, but, um, you know, I feel like if they didn't get a lot of these, you know, far-left groups like People's Platform or D S A, which have personally attacked the administration and spread misinformation, we would have had, or the activists would have had better luck getting that sixteen million. But, you know, it is what it is, and at least twenty million will do some good. Um, not as much as thirty-six million, but at least some good. Um, and I stand with the residents, um, the Kronos plan is, uh, eyesore. It's a disgrace and.
The next caller is Stephen Remmer.
Can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you. Good af- good morning.
Hello, Council President Sheffield, Stephen Remmer here, Detroit Tenant Association. I'm seeking out their rights renewed with good cause protections. Uh, if folks are familiar, that's a ordinance that will obligate landlords to renew a lease of a tenant that has done nothing wrong. It'll also provide protections for tenants on month-to-month lease. Uh, we've been in a long conversation with President Sheffield's office. Last we were told that we have a draft from Detroit Labor Department on March thirteenth. It is now April eighth. We sent our emails. We haven't heard anything. Um, President Sheffield, I know you're really busy, especially running for mayor, but people right now are being unjustly evicted day after day. Could you, could you make some time to support Detroit tenants? Share the updated language with the Detroit Tenant Association, and let's get this passed. Um, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And Mr. Remmer, as you know, um, we have been in the budget deliberations for the last four weeks roughly. Um, the last that I do know is that the ordinance was, uh, assigned to the Law Department, and I will make sure my team follows up to see if a draft has been, um, produced. Uh, and we will be getting with you all to go over what that ordinance looks like. So again, the assignment was given to Law Department, and of course, the last few weeks, we've been on pause because we've been focusing on the budget. So, uh, looking forward to having those discussions now that we are done and providing you a copy of the draft ordinance once we receive it. Thank you, Mr. Remmer. Our next caller.
The next caller is Pamela McLean.
Pamela McLean, good morning.
Yes, good morning. Um, I am retired executive commander Pam McLean and also the appointed liaison to the newly established Women's Commission. I first want to thank the Honorable Detroit City Councilwoman Angela Callaway, as well as the entire Detroit City Council for bestowing a testimonial resolution upon my sister, my friend, the inimitable Chief Gina Steele Hughes. My sister, I have known her for over thirty-five years, and I wanted her to know how proud I am and congratulate her on a job well done. Uh, her and I both know too well that in the eighties, the road to many firsts were marked by racism, sexism and misogyny, never easy, but it was done all with style, grace, and she never complained. But even with all her outstanding and indisputable accolades, her greatest accomplishment is her wonderful son Steele, who along with the rest of their family, wanted to ensure that his mother's name, her name, Chief Gina Steele Hughes, shall never be forgotten and will go down in the annals of Detroit history.
Madam Chair? Yes, Member Callaway?
I don't know who should, this should go to. I'll just through the, through, um, you to, um, the attorney from L P D. Um, if we can take a look at naming one of the precinct, one of the, um, fire houses or, um, I don't know what you call them. Um, after, um, Gina Steele Hughes, I'd like to, um, I'll send you a memorandum just to look into it, but through yourself to you, sir. Um, I'd like to, um, look into having one of the firehouses or the academy, I don't even know where that is, named after Gina, um, Steele Hughes. And I will send you a memorandum by the end of the day. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Member Callaway. Okay, our next caller?
The next caller is William M. Davis.
Mr. Davis, good morning. Mr. Davis, good morning. Good morning, Mr. Davis. Okay, let's come back to Mr. Davis, please.
The next caller is Betty A. Varner.
Ms. Varner, good morning.
Uh, good morning to all within the sound of my voice. Um, uh, Honorable Councilmember Tate, this is to you. I know you're not my councilperson, but my daughter has a, uh, a issue and it's, uh, she's in District One. She's reached out to your office about the same issue. It's a flood, her basement flooding. A few years ago, she called twice, nobody responded. She had a recent incident from this last water problem we had. I mean, this, uh, rain we had. I called Monday, and I know you've been on your budget or whatever because I've been right there with y'all. But I left a message Monday, voicemail. I haven't heard anything. My daughter is here now. I'm going to give her a few minutes to ask for your help. Well, she needs help. She don't want to speak. But if you could call me and then I can give you her number or have somebody call because she has a ongoing problem with the flooding.
All right, thank you so much, Pro Tim Tate.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, ma- um, Ms. Varner, thank you. I'm not sure what happened because I know we've been dealing with a number of folks who have floods and flooded situations over the past week, past year, honestly, and, and, and even longer than that. So I will get your phone number from my colleague in District Seven, um, so that we will be able to connect and, uh, see what we can do to provide assistance to your daughter. Uh, noting that, again, we don't run the department, uh, but we will work to do everything we can to address our situation. So apologies if, uh, she made the phone call and no one, uh, called back. I will absolutely check into that as well. So if she can please let us know what time she called, uh, to best of her ability, so I can do an investigation in the office as well. So take it very seriously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Pro Tim. Our next caller, please.
The next caller is Tara Brown.
Tara Brown?
Good morning. Thank you, Council. Um, I'm, I'm calling in because we are still having an issue with homelessness. I know the mayor put out a seven-point plan. However, Barb Poppy and Associates was paid half a million dollars for a strategic plan that is struggling to be rolled out. We need an update on that. We also need some oversight on these homeless shelters. Again, there are people living in that shelter on grass shit, and I have requested the records for it. I have not heard back. But yeah, just from what I have gotten, it needs some attention and not just a zoning board approval. Those people are not all professionals. They don't necessarily know what they're doing, and you all need to be taking a look at it. And it's, it's hard to understand how all the information needed for oversight is right there in your building from the top floor to the bottom floor, and somehow or another, either you all don't care or you're just not paying attention. Somebody needs to look into that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next caller is Kyle Nkala.
All right, good morning.
Good morning, Council. Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Great, thank you. I'm here, uh, to stand with Mr. Charles Brooks, Jr., who is a gentleman who has completely revitalized his neighborhood on the east side. Uh, first of all, we need to abolish the land bank. The land bank is a private entity that is acting on behalf of the city, and they're truly terrorizing citizens of Detroit. Everything from moratoriums on side lots to holding side lots for certain businesses to overcharging nonprofits like the downtown youth boxing gym for their side lots. The nuisance abatement program also needs to be abolished to be holding citizens to a standard that's higher than what the land bank does with their list of blighted houses. I've had houses in my neighborhood sit blighted for longer than two, three, four, five years. They're open to, they're open and have been burnt down, and then I have neighborhood managers come by and I have to point those out to them. There's blight piles all around land bank houses, and yet you go to Mr. Brooks and Ray Solomon and your, also your social media.
Thank you so much.
The next caller is Shashana Shakur.
All right, good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
No, you sound very far away.
Okay, can, can you hear me now?
Nope, you still sound very far away.
Okay, all, all right. Um.
That's a li- that's a little bit better.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. I am an advocate for the Coalition for Property Tax Justice. Today, I want to remind City Council members that the city of Detroit, whose residents were once majority homeowners, are now majority renters. This injustice occurred largely due to the six hundred million dollar theft of the city's overtax assessment for property owners between the years of two thousand nine and two thousand and fifteen. Not only were homeowners overtaxed, many of them lost their homes due to foreclosure. These were legacy homes belonging to Big Mama, Big Daddy, grandparents, parents, Detroiters who labored through racism, oppression and unbearable conditions. Um, this unjust practice of overassessment, it continues and it leads to foreclosures. We need the City Council to pass a resolution encouraging Wayne County Treasurer Sabree to halt the foreclosures for properties worth less than fifty thousand. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next caller is You Matter.
You Matter, good morning. You Matter, good morning.
Good morning. May I be heard?
Yes.
Yeah, I wish the city would stop putting out this false narrative that everybody in the sub-targeted solar areas is okay with that. And, um, but you know, this city, especially the Department of Neighborhoods, uses the district managers to go find people that will help push their narrative, and then they ignore other people. And, um, you know, in terms of the land bank, everybody know Mary Sheffield, Scott Benson and James Tate all voted for this version of the land bank. It runs around taking people's property when they don't take care of their own property. I warned Mary Sheffield not to vote for it, but she went ahead and did it anyway. Then she and the rest of the council voted for her secretly made development plan, North End Landing. I'm calling it Mary Sheffield's betrayal. Her own staff tried to tell me that the local block club voted for it. Well, they're so out of touch, they don't even know that's true. So, you know, look at these people who've been here for a while and before you.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Wary.
The next caller is Karen Hammer.
Karen Hammer, good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. The cutoff for voting on the mayor's budget was last night. I didn't make that, so my comment is to inform everyone listening. Homelessness would be prevented by what I am about to say. Right to counsel is the free legal counsel for scheduled rental evictions. This Detroit law exists, and in twenty twenty-four, over twenty thousand Detroiters faced eviction. All the money for the right to counsel from the city should go to the right to counsel immediately. The twenty-five, twenty-six budget per city needs to match the number of Detroiters that are being evicted. The city's millions of reserve money make it possible and necessary to use ARPA, budget surplus, grants and.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hammer.
Uh, next caller is Russ Ballant.
Okay, Russ Ballant?
Yes, good morning. Uh, I want to, uh, first endorse what the. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. It's a little static, but we can hear you. There we go.
I want to first endorse the Coalition for Property Tax Justice call for the, uh, 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 resolution to Eric Sabree to stop, uh, foreclosures under fifty thousand dollars. There's so much, uh, so many problems in the assessment process going on. Uh, we can protect people by, uh, not doing those foreclosures. Uh, secondly, uh, on the, uh, Kronos matter, um, the biggest, uh, threat of the Kronos project is their plans to close the streets and turn the, the acres and probably forty acres of land into, uh, concrete crushing that we're going to have the same problem as they have at I ninety-six and, uh, Greenfield area and the Schoolcraft area. Please don't allow them to close the streets or expand that cr- crushing operation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next caller is Marguerite Scarlett Maddox.
Ms. Maddox, good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I would like to hear you guys taking a look at seven, seven four, seven three, I'm going down to seven four, seven five. Five, which is the public transportation issue. Please explain to all of us what it means. And and the homeless situation. We, we are looking for a way to come up with a solution to, to make sure that everyone has, has a home. And and we need to re-educate the fire department and the first responders on how to react with people with, uh, disabilities. Because some, sometimes when, when I work. work rock and roll by myself, I always do things look from, from the police department who, who may not know me. Some, some know me and some do not know me. And we have the heart. Me, me must stand, we will, we will all the way down from from the beginning. I know it down. We have pleasure. Under the road. I, I can see the damage progress. Yes, but I do not see the power point of the heart pleasure. So please let me know where I can find the power point of every heart pleasure. I'm done. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Maddox.
The next caller is phone number ending in 337.
All right, good morning. Good morning. All right, what was the caller? The last four digits?
The last three digits were 337.
All right, 337. Caller 337. Okay, let's come back to this caller, please.
Okay, the next caller is Matthew Thomas.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Hi, all right. So I'm calling, I am in on the, live on Jerome Street by the Cronos facility over here, and everybody has mentioned stuff about the facility itself, but from where I'm at, it's the fields across the street from us that's one of the biggest problems here is that everything's been clear cut. The trees have been cut down. The houses are down. There's no ground cover on any of this right now. And anytime the dust picks up here, all of that dust blows into the house as well. So that's a major problem here. My child cannot play in his own yard. We cannot have our windows open in the summertime because of the dust from that field comes in here. The chemical that was used to kill everything, I'm not sure what it was, but when I asked the people what they were spraying, they said that you can't buy this. It will kill everything forever. It is poison, and because of their dust mitigation, now the storm system is overwhelmed and our, my basement is now flooding because the streets stay wet all the.
Okay, thank you, sir, for calling, yeah.
The next caller is Veronica Smith.
Good morning. Good morning, Veronica Smith. Good morning, Veronica Smith. Okay, let's come back to this caller, please.
Okay, the next caller would be Deborah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, amazing. I'm calling on behalf of several residents located directly across the street from the Townhouse Restaurant. We're at a private resident directly across the street from the Townhouse. The issue is in regards to the noise violation. I can give the owner's name if necessary, but we've tried to amicably ask them to turn the music down, et cetera, et cetera. Had personal conversation with the owner who shared with me, in specific, very arrogantly, entitled, and dignit, and in a very rude manner, that he not only owned the Townhouse, but he owned Prime &amp; Proper and many more establishments, that he would do whatever he felt he wanted to do, that we could call the Detroit Police Department, Mayor, City Council, or Dan Gilbert. He would leave his music and his strobe lights as loud and vigilant as possible. Employees there are, it vibrates our windows in this building.
Okay, if you don't mind, we'll connect you. I know that's Councilmember Santiago Romero's district. Also very familiar with the owner of that location as well. So if you call our office, we can make sure we connect you to the appropriate individuals. And the number is 313-224-4505. 313-224-4505, and we can see how we can intervene to support in any way possible. Okay. Thank you so much, and our next caller, please.
The next caller is Chris Gilmer Hill.
Good morning. Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Good morning. My name's Chris Gilmer Hill. I'm calling in as a lifelong resident of the city's second district. And I'm calling in armed with the fact that our city council does have the power to do more about these concrete crushers and the fugitive dust that's plaguing our neighborhoods. We know that this problem is not solved. Places like Cronos or SRM Concrete or any of the other ones are just visibly putting out concrete dust. If you're driving along Seven Mile from where I live in District Two just to the freeway over in District Three, you drive past a huge swath of concrete dust that spills out of the SRM concrete facility and all over the street in front of the businesses on either side. Our city council has the power to enforce or to strengthen ordinances to demand that those are enforced and to ensure that these concrete crushers are no longer a problem in our city. I'd like to thank Councilmember Santiago Romero for starting that process of demanding accountability. And I'd like to urge that if these laws need to be fixed, the council should be prepared to fix them, whether now or next year when we have a better mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next caller is Renard Monfonsky.
All right, good morning.
Good morning, Madam President. Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Good morning, and my name is Renard Monfonsky. I'm a District Six resident, legacy Detroiter lifelong. And I'm trans, organizing with the Detroit People's Platform. Sorry if I sound kind of different. Healing. I was really sick over the past two weeks. However, it didn't slow down my resolve when it comes to double D-Dot. And in this type of work, sometimes when we organize, we do get wins, but we might not get everything we want. However, I think it was very momentous to hear so many voices in support of public transit. So my deep gratitude is based goes to all the activists of all the organizations. And I'm not a divisive person. I don't care what your ideological bent is, but if your values align with justice, racial justice, civil rights, and making sure that our transit service, all public services work, you're not out of mind. Simple as that. And I want to thank everyone for taking their time in this campaign.
Okay, thank you, Renard.
The next caller is Sonia Brown.
May I be heard?
Yes, you can.
May I be heard? As I just spoke in with my councilman, I believe several of my issues will be resolved soon. But one of the issues that I am still concerned about is our homeless population. We have to do something. These evictions that are adding to the homeless populations that's creating a greater status of what we have yet to fix needs to be resolved. We need to add more resources out here for parenting. Our young ladies that are being dismissed out of these hospitals and things with these babies with no parenting resources, no advocates to aid in these children. It's unacceptable. We're losing too many of our babies to parents that are not capable of parenting. We need to have something to follow up on without, other than just CPS. And again, we definitely need to do something about our homeless population. Too many generations are being evicted out in these streets, and we know why. The overtaxations, the rob of the land, all of this. I thank you.
The next caller is Cindy Dara.
Cindy Dara, good morning.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Dara.
Can you hear me?
Ms. Dara, yes.
I can't hear you, but wait a minute. I gotta get the volume up. That's what's wrong. Okay, I asked one question. Are you meeting tonight with the citizens? Can you answer me that?
Ms. Dara, finish your public comment, but we do not have an evening council meeting tonight.
Okay, all right. I need help getting my signatures for city clerk. I want a better election system. If we can get approval voting, we've got 10 people running for mayor. That's going to split the vote, and it'll allow gaming from people who have a lot of money, put extra opponents to look like their opponents and sound like their opponents so they can split their opponents' vote off. Well, that's one of the things, but there's a lot of things I'd like to see done to improve our democracy here. And that's the basic. If we're going to get some of these problems solved, I think I'm interested in making the political system better. So help me, 313-414-5181. 313-414-5181. I live on Peterborough, but in Cass and Second, 492 Peterborough, so you can drop something in my mail.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dara.
Okay, we are now back to the four callers who did not respond last time. And the first caller is phone number ending in 169.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, great. I just want to say Cunningham is a, is very remarkable. It's surprising to know that Cunningham does not get paid for his good deeds. I bet each and every one of you to the sound of my voice would have given up a long time ago. How would that be? Get your foot off his neck. Karma is real. Karma is very real. City council persons, elected officials, bosses, authorities, clergy, little people like him, don't let karma plague you again. Fix your karma by helping Cunningham. First off, he needs a new van. He needs bus tickets. He needs prayer. Back up off him. Thank you for my time.
Thank you.
Okay, the next caller is William M. Davis.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, good morning. All right, Mr. Davis, going once. Going twice. All right, Mr. Davis, please submit your public comment to the clerk's office for public record. And we will continue to our next caller.
The next caller is phone number ending in 337.
Caller 337, good morning.
Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Thank you for a second chance. I don't know what happened to my phone, but I could not unmute. This is Pat Bosch, resident of District Three. I wish to add my voice to the Detroit Hamtramck Coalition for Healthy Environments against the Cronos and Cement Crushing Factory. It is no joke that Cronos, or otherwise known as Crown Development, is a major contributor to political campaigns. But the residents have a voice, and we are watching City Council. And we are asking that you do what the Great Lakes Environmental Firm has asked you to do. For this, we are asking for health reasons for our youth as well as our seniors. It is no joke to put a Joe Louis Greenway next to the cement crushing.
Okay, thank you.
And the last caller for public comment is Veronica Smith.
All right, Ms. Smith. Veronica Smith.
Good morning, everyone. I'm sorry I couldn't get them muted the first time around. I am calling for the Coalition Property Tax Justice, and I'm asking, once again, the City Council address the property tax overassessment and implement the property tax ordinance, reform ordinance by, one, addressing this systemic overassessment of properties worth less than $50,000 by passing a resolution asking Wayne County Treasurer Eric Sabree to halt the foreclosure on homes worth less than its value. Vote on to send properties worth less than $50,000 to the Board of Review. And lastly, what is the status of the 2024 Assessment Ratio Study produced by IAAI? Excuse me, IAO. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. That study is complete, and the coalition has a copy of it. So I hope that Professor Bernadette will send it to you all. That study is complete, and now that we are out of budget, it should be referred to council as well, and we will move accordingly. So that study is complete. Okay, that will conclude all of our public comment, and we will now go back to our agenda. Understanding Committee reports for the Budget, Finance, and Audit Standing Committee under Resolutions.
Councilmember Waters, a resolution line item 16, 17.1, noting that this line item was reported out of the Budget, Finance, and Audit Standing Committee without recommendation. Councilmember Waters?
Member Waters.
Thank you, Madam President. Move for approval with discussion.
Okay, discussion, member, member Waters.
Well, since it was sent out of budget without recommendation, I want to understand why, I guess. If they care to share.
Discussion.
Member Durha.
Thank you, Madam President, and through you to member Waters. I think this is a great resolution. I just had a couple of issues with the language that is in here. And we were checking on some stats, particularly the University of Chicago study as well. But if you are willing to amend some language, I am fine with that. There is a lined, and whereas, I think this is the third whereas. And I understand the teeth. I understand the teeth. But the language, extreme legal violence, I think is a bit strong. And then on the finally resolved, or I'm sorry, the resolved before the finally, before the finally resolved demands. And so those were just two, two minor issues that we had with the language. But again, if you are willing to push it forward as is, that's fine.
Madam President.
Yes, member Waters?
Yes, I didn't have a problem with it. I wish you had told me about it when it was in committee about that language, because it could have been done, because I want this move today.
We can simply just amend it here at the table if that's no issue.
That's fine by me. Go ahead with your language and amend it.
Yeah, through you, through you, member Waters. And first, let me state, I would have told you about it at committee, but it is in our committee, so we would hope that the resolution would have somebody representative from your office there to talk about it. Because we had it there, we had it there in a few, we had that in there for a few weeks for you. But again, I think it's a great resolution. And so it's just those minor tweaks. So the third whereas, where it says to pay property taxes is an act of, or I'm sorry, the county taking a person's home for failure to pay property taxes is an act of extreme legal violence. I don't know what you are amenable to. But I would like.
What you want to see. I want to get it done.
Okay, so I would, I would just strike legal violence. And I am amenable to whatever you would like to replace right there by still trying to keep the spirit. Uh, and I am amenable to whatever you would like to replace right there by still trying to keep the spirit, um, uh, of your resolution.
How about inhumane treatment?
Discussion. Member Waters, I'm trying to, I love you, I'm trying to work with you, member Waters.
Choose it, member Durha, please. I, I, you know, I just, okay.
And through you, just, just the discussion. And one of the reasons why I'm asking that, member Waters, because, um, I, I guess, yes, the county treasurer can push forth the moratorium, which we would like for them to do. Um, but I don't wanna state that when the county treasurer takes an act, uh, and then they're acting under the law, that they're committing, uh, an act of, again, extreme legal violence or inhumane treatment. Because that, that may not necessarily be their intention, they're just following the law.
Following the law, that, okay.
And so, uh, I am comfortable with, you know, um, you know, it is, uh, is, it's, you know, it's an act or it's something that's unfortunate or whatever the case may be. Uh, and if you're amenable to that, then I'm fine.
I, I'm amenable to it. I need you to go ahead, offer up the amendment, uh, member Durha. The point is, I wanna get this to the treasurer.
I agree, that's why we moved it out of committee and did not keep it in there for the language.
And so, so go ahead with your language.
So I moved to-
I'm giving you permission.
Thank you, ma'am. So I moved to, uh, strike, uh, is an act of extreme legal violence from the third whereas of this resolution and put, uh, the counties taking a person's home for failure to pay property taxes is unfortunate uh, and can cause displacement or homelessness.
Okay, I like the word homelessness, thank you.
That is, that is my motion.
Discussion, member Young?
Did member Benson raise his hand before me? I think he did.
I did, please proceed.
Okay, I, yeah, I didn't wanna pass you up, alright. I just wanted to say, um, from, from my understanding, I might be wrong, but pay as you stay, I don't think that exists anymore. That, that, that program, I know the other ones do, but I think pay as you stay.
I know he mentioned it was winding down.
Yeah, it's winding down and I think there was something with the date-
I don't think it ended yet, did it?
Oh, no, you know, it was supposed to end, but then it got extended 'cause of the bomb threat. Okay, nevermind, nevermind, nevermind.
Member Benson, did you have something still?
Uh, I just wanted to say, I, I think, I'm glad both of the, um, the council persons are able to have this conversation. I hope that we can continue to work closely with, uh, Treasurer Sabree and just appreciate the ability to, uh, work through language that I believe would be accepted, um, as a constructive criticism, uh, and urging to the, uh, county treasurer. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, member Benson.
I have a constructive criticism.
Any objections to the, uh, friendly amendment to the wording, the resolution for the third whereas? Okay, hearing none, that action will be taken?
Discussion?
Yes.
This is also where it can be very helpful to work with LPD when crafting resolutions.
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's true.
Okay, and then the last, uh, resolved, the resolved before the finally resolved, we wanted to change that from demands to urge, is that, we are urging? Is that okay, member Waters?
It is.
Okay, is there a motion to change the word from demands to urge?
Motion.
Hearing no objections, that action will be taken. Okay, now, member Waters, if you wanna move the resolution as amended?
Uh, Madam President, I'm move approval, uh, as amended.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yeah, I just, you know, after you vote, I have a comment.
After we vote, okay. Member Young?
I, I just wanted to just, just, just state, you know, it might still be out, it might still be around, it's limited. The pay as you stay program is being sunset. So I don't know if you wanted to keep that language in there as a program for something that we know is coming to an end or not, I just wanna let you know, that program is coming to an end this year.
Alright.
It's, it's okay for now, it hasn't ended yet.
Okay, so you know.
Okay, hearing no objections, the resolution will be passed as amended. Mr. Whitaker?
The actual amendments, do you want our, our office to make sure that, that it reflects the way in which you vote or you, or should member Waters' office handle that?
Member Waters?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, please do so, sir.
We'd be happy to, thank you.
Alright.
Alright, under Resolutions.
Councilmember Waters, on behalf of Council President Mary Sheffield, a resolution line item 17.2, noting that this line item was reported out of the Budget, Finance and Audit Standing Committee without recommendation.
Alright, councilmember Waters? Alright, I know we wanna move it for discussion and, yep, thank you. And I know it came out of committee, I think without recommendation as well. Um, and in light of some of the budget deliberations and understanding the approach of how to address proportional, um, from my understanding, there was some colleagues that wanted a little bit more time to discuss, uh, this resolution. And so I am open to hear from you all if we want to send this back to committee or remove it from the agenda until more discussion, um, is able to take place.
Discussion.
Yes, member Benson?
Alright, thank you. Um, I was one of the ones that was interested in having more conversations about this. I didn't want this to be rushed through during the budget process. I wanted to be a little bit more, not a little bit, I wanted to be more deliberative about this and have a conversation on how to responsibly move forward with setting a baseline and a mandatory funding process for those oversight, um, institutions and offices. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, member Benson, member Pro Tem Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I do support the, uh, wrapping up of the, uh, proportional funding and to the point where we added some language in the closing resolution that, uh, indicated, uh, this body's support. Uh, certainly open, you know, by all means of any conversation as we move forward. But I think, uh, we have had, uh, discussion, meetings, um, and would hope that we can come to a conclusion, uh, very soon on this particular item. But I am in support of, uh, wrapping up, uh, to get to the, um, TEF that's been in, that has been identified by the various agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tem. Councilmember Young?
I think it'd be more prudent instead of kicking it back to committee that we just postponed this for a week, have those conversations, have those discussions, and then next week, if we're ready, we can vote it out.
Any, any additional discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
Would it be helpful if we undertook to have the resolution rewritten to match up with what you did during the budget process? 'Cause you're operating with a, with a resolution that doesn't even reflect that, so-
Very helpful.
If that would be helpful, we'd be happy to undertake it if we get so directed.
Is there a motion to us to direct, uh, Mr. Whitaker, to, um, amend and redo another resolution based on the approach that we took during our budget deliberations?
So, I'm moving.
Motion.
Discussion?
Okay, discussion, member Young?
And you know, maybe this is just me being, you know, the bizarre slow kid in the class here, but I just always thought that it was important to make sure that policy and appropriations were on separate tracks. I don't have a problem with this reflecting that, but usually those two things were separate. The language that you had for the policy was one thing and then the language that you had for the appropriation, the actual revenue, were different. Are you saying that in order for this to operate in its best possible way with the way which we intended to be crafted, those two things need to be merged together? And that's why we're doing this?
Madam President? Um, our policy statements in the resolution probably won't change a bit.
Okay.
But, but what we attached to the resolution was a way and we, we attached the formula to the resolution and I think, given what happened in budget deliberations, that was altered a bit to this ramp up. And we want the resolution now to reflect what you've done in your budget. You can change it again if you want, but, but right now, at least you should be operating from, from what you've done recently. That's the thought.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion.
Yep, member Durha?
Thank you, and just very quickly, I am okay with us, I guess, postponing this for a week to allow for that amended language. Uh, what I would ask, because it is not going back, uh, to committee, uh, to actually be heard, uh, for the second reading of that, uh, that we make sure that we discuss that here when it comes back next week, uh, the formula specifically for the public and for those who did not tune in, uh, to our budget hearings. That would be my ask, uh, if it is not to go back to, uh, committee to allow for transparency, uh, and the discussion of the formula for, uh, the public. Thank you.
Discussion.
Member Benson?
Alright, thank you. I wanted to see if my colleague would be open to a modification of the motion to actually send this back to committee. 'Cause what we're now asking to do is do committee work in formal session where the discussion and an in-depth conversation is more appropriate at the committee level and then ask the chair to ensure quorum is noted. The budget has been passed. The sort of Damocles is no longer above our head. We can be more deliberative as we move forward. The budget has been passed, so the rate, the increases are there. I would like to take more time and be more deliberative through this process versus trying to rush it through in one week. We don't have a, an time-sensitive issue before us right now. So I would suggest that I go back to committee, do the committee work there and then bring it back once it's ready.
Discussion.
Member Durha?
Thank you, as the chair of that committee, I'm not opposed to that either. Uh, and, and if, if that is the will of the body, uh, we would love to have it go back to committee to have that discussion and allow, and allow council members to weigh in. I think at the time, our thinking was, uh, we wanted to be able to have that prudent discussion during the budget uh, because these, uh, departments were gonna be affected by the decisions we made and the budget that we passed. I wanted to have that opportunity to maybe even at that time call maybe a special session if we were needed, if we had needed to vote on that resolution prior. And that's one of the reasons we sent it out without recommendation, not stating that, uh, we were against it or not, but just giving the opportunity for other council members to weigh in. Uh, so I know, member Young, I don't know if he made a proper motion to postpone it for a week. Uh, but what I would, uh, what I would like to do is to make a motion to send this, uh, back to committee. Uh, with the, uh, and Mr. Whitaker, you'll have, you guys will have the updated, um, reso. Send this back to committee to, uh, afford discussion. Further discussion.
Alright, any, yes, more discussion? Pro Tem Tate?
Thank you, I'm just, just wanted to know what, what is the portion that, what, what do we have to, to discuss uh, that we have not thus far? Not saying that there is no need, but I'm just trying to understand the nuances of, because we did have a pretty decent-sized discussion during the budget period. So through you, Madam President, to members who can outline what we need to finalize outside of what we put into the closing reso yesterday.
Discussion?
Yep, member Benson?
I'd like to have a more in-depth conversation about the actual formula, the, uh, long-term viability, how this works moving forward. We had conversations regarding the immediate part of ensuring the funding, but the formula for me is what was not, uh, discussed at a detailed level, the kind of level I would expect to have in the committee and a non-rushed conversation about the formula moving forward, which is something that will become an ordinance and be set in stone. Although it is a malleable stone, because it can still go through the process, but a malleable stone that doesn't often happen at this table.
Alright, thank you. If it does in fact go back to committee, I would hope that we will, you know, wrap it up soon so that we can have some finality, seeing that there, uh, this has been kinda hanging for a while and us having conversations as a body, not putting any blame on anyone at all. This is, you know, what happens when you are charged with the taxpayers' dollars. We should take the time that's necessary to go through it as, uh, we have thus far, but just hoping that we can, um, execute the process sooner rather than later and not have it hanging, uh, too much longer. Thank you.
Alright, member Benson?
I agree with, uh, the Pro Tem. Time is always of the essence. I also believe in a deliberative process as well to get, take the time to do an in-depth analysis and then come back to this body with a recommendation.
Discussion.
Right, member, member, uh, Durha?
And as the chair of that committee, I do plan to put it on the agenda, uh, expeditiously. Uh, it passes, um, uh, formal today or, uh, if the motion passes formal today and it goes back, um, and before I make the rest of that statement, let me ask Mr. Whitaker, how long do you? Alright, thank you, sir. So, so we can plan to add that to the agenda tomorrow as well. Uh, member Benson, if you are available, uh, to put on the agenda a discussion just specifically, uh, for this line item and take both of those together. Uh, and, uh, they are not at the microphone, but I see our oversight agencies are here. Uh, I would hope that you would be available for that discussion tomorrow, uh, to have that with member Benson as well as other members of our committee. Uh, and so with that, I believe I've, uh, made a proper motion to send this back to committee. Uh, Madam President?
Okay, any objections? Hearing none, that item will be sent to committee.
Madam President?
Yes, member Waters?
May I have a waiver on 17.1?
Okay, waiver has been requested for 17.1. Hearing no objections, that action will be taken. For the Internal Operations Standing Committee from the Law Department?
Councilmember Santiago Romero, introduction of an ordinance, line item 18.1.
Councilmember Santiago Romero?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the ordinance be read twice by title, order printed and laid on the table.
Hearing no objections, that action shall be taken from the Law Department?
Councilmember Santiago Romero, a resolution setting a public hearing, line item 18.2.
Councilmember Santiago Romero?
Thank you, Madam President. Move for approval with discussion?
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. We will set the public hearing TBD. Want to make sure that I go around to each of my colleagues, um, talking about the Language Access Ordinance that will be before us soon and we will then set the date. Thank you.
Okay. Any objections to the scheduling of a public hearing? Hearing none, that action will be taken.
Thank you.
Alright, from the Law Department?
Councilmember Johnson, six resolutions, line items 18.3 through 18.8.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. Move for approval, these are various lawsuit settlement requests.
Any objections? Hearing none, these six resolutions will be approved. From the Office of Development and Grants?
Councilmember Johnson, a resolution, line item 18.9.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. Move for approval. This is an authorization to submit a grant application to Bloomberg Philanthropies for the fiscal year 2025 Global Mayor's Challenge Grant.
Alright, hearing no, yes, member, member Callaway, sorry.
Thank you, is there anyone on from Do-It? Just wanna know a little bit about this million-dollar grant, um, or I guess would be the CFO's office. What, um, is the purpose of the grant? No, it's no CD match, but just curious. That's, that's great money, great grant. Don't have to pay it back, don't have to match it, um, but would just like to know what is the project?
Okay, Mr. Washington?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have Kat Hartman from Do-It online.
Okay, we will promote her.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Alright, member Callaway, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, what's the purpose of the grant? How will it be used? Million-dollar grant is called the, um, the Mayor's Challenge Grant? How will, how will it be used?
Um, so we are, through the chair, excuse me, um, we are using, uh, this money to extend all of our work, um, for the Enterprise Data Warehouse. So we want to, uh, build a multi-dimensional unified view of every property in the city of Detroit. Um, we want to be able to serve, uh, our residents more effectively, uh, utilizing, uh, integrated data to do so. Um, so this will enable a multitude of potential projects. Um, the question will be, what, uh, what do we wanna tackle during this time? We will have the opportunity to choose a prototype. Some of the ones that have been chosen are related to, um, uh, right-of-way permitting, um, property tax revenue, uh, rental compliance, but there's, there's, um, it will enable a lot of different things and I can go into more technical detail if that's useful.
Um, can you provide something in writing so we can read?
Sure.
What's going to be involved with this particular grant? I think it's great, it's a million dollars and we don't have to pay it back, we don't have to match it, as I indicated earlier. But I just wanna read more about what you're going to do with this, these grant dollars 'cause what I've discovered- because what I've discovered, um, sometimes grant dollars and ARPA dollars are earmarked for one thing, and then they're used for something else. So I know with grants, you are required to use what, um, what it's being given to the city for. You have to use it for that purpose. But if you could provide something in writing, I'd like to read more about, um, the, um, the Global Mayor's Challenge Grant.
Through the chair, uh, happy to. We can, uh, bundle up the, the draft application and, and send it over.
Okay, when might I get that? Through the chair?
Um, through the chair, I can, I can send that along to, um, should I send that to Malik? Uh, but I can do that, uh, right after this discussion.
Yep, that'd be great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, thank you so much. Really excited about this project. Uh, big supporter of the data warehouse. I just wanted to ask you, are we going to be using online analytical, uh, processing through this at all?
Uh, through the chair. So the, the goal is to start exploring, uh, more sophisticated, uh, analytical and statistical techniques.
Okay.
So, um, we have built, uh, a foundation to integrate all of this data so that we know, uh, what is happening at any given, um, spot in terms of, uh, in the city in terms of administrative data. So now we will start to, uh, explore how to process that and actually be able to, uh, garner, um, uh, insights on what to make decisions about or to improve operations with respect to more informed permitting systems or property revenue generation, whatever it may be. Um, but the, the short answer, I suppose, is yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any additional questions? All right, hearing none. A motion has been made to approve eighteen point nine. Any objections? Hearing no objections, the one resolution will be approved. From the Human Resources Administration Division. Member Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Move for approval. This is to implement the 2024 through 2027 labor agreement between the City of Detroit and the Emergency Medical Services Officers Association.
All right, any discussion? Any objections? Hearing no objections, the one resolution will be approved. From the Human Resources Classification and Compensation Division.
Councilmember Johnson, three resolutions, nine items, eighteen point eleven through eighteen point thirteen.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. Move for approval. These are, uh, various requests to amend the official compensation schedule for, um, different positions.
Okay. Um, are there any objections to amending any of these? All right, hearing no objections, the three resolutions will be approved.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to request a waiver on line item eighteen point ten.
Okay. Any objection to a waiver for eighteen point ten? Hearing none, that action will be taken. For the Planning and Economic Development Standing Committee from the Office of Contracting and Procurement.
Council President Pro Tem James Tate, a resolution, line item nineteen point one. It's contract number six zero zero six five three seven dash A one. One hundred percent city funding, amendment one, to provide an extension of time and an increase of funds for temporary emergency shelter services for homeless city residents, contractors, Detroit Rescue Mission Ministries. Total contract amount, two hundred thousand. That's for housing and revitalization. Council President Pro Tem James Tate, a resolution.
All right, Pro Tem Tate.
Madam President, I move approval of line item nineteen point one.
All right, discussion. Councilmember Young.
Through the administration.
Mr. Washington.
Online to talk to you.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have Tara Linsner, as well as Elizabeth Iana Johnson, online.
Okay.
Okay, we will promote both of them. Can I get member Young?
Thank you, Madam President.
Well, I see Terry Linsner is on.
Ms. Linsner?
Good morning.
Through, through, through the chair, Ms. Linsner?
Okay, um, the, the reason why I had you on here is I just wanted to ask you, do we have an analysis or a five-year or ten-year scenario of, of these homeless shelters that we're building? How much are they going to reduce the homeless shel-, uh, the homelessness issue? Uh, I think it's twenty-seven percent of the city lands on my check, uh, is homeless in the city of Detroit. Do we have a analysis of how, of how much that number is being reduced with these shelters that are being built? Um, do we have a analysis of how much per dollar, uh, this actually would decrease, uh, not just homelessness, but also the investment that that dollar would give towards homelessness problem that we invest in? And, uh, also, I just want to know, do we know how much the homelessness problem costs the taxpayer currently in building these shelters? How much taxpayers would save long-term in being able to do that? Because I think this would really help long-term in showing us the investment that we're making so that the public could see that with this investment, we are reducing these numbers by this amount. We're reducing the homeless situation by this amount at the same time. Do we have an analysis like that at all? Either through the, either through this contract or through, uh, HRD or any other city department that I'm not thinking of at the time?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Uh, Tara Linsner, homelessness solutions director in the Housing Revitalization Department. So, emergency shelter doesn't end people's homelessness outright. What it does, it provides a safe place for them to stay so that they're not having to sleep outside in the elements.
Right.
Once in emergency shelter, what ends their homelessness is, um, different types of, um, affordable housing, different types of homelessness, uh, programs such as rapid rehousing, uh, supportive housing or permanent supportive housing programs. Um, that is, um, or reconciliation with family or friends. So that's what ends their homelessness. Emergency shelter is just making sure that we have a safety net in our community so that individuals, when they do find themselves, um, you know, with nowhere to stay, do, um, have someplace to go that's inside and safe, um, so they're not having to sleep outside. In, in terms of an analysis, our strategic plan, um, that we have, our five-year, um, strategic plan in addressing homelessness calls out the number of emergency shelter beds, um, based off of their analysis that they believe that we need to have online, as well as the number of other types of supportive housing, like rapid rehousing or permanent supportive housing, as well as, um, other types of affordable housing that we need so that people can exit out of, flow out of the homelessness system, out of emergency shelter and in, and into housing. Um, and then finally, I'll just say that when we have emergen-, when we don't have emergency shelter available for folks, people end up using other places, right? They'll end up using, going to the emergency room, using ERs, um, using, um, using, um, you know, transit centers for shelter and using other locations. And so definitely, when we can prevent people from feeling like they need to go to the emergency room because they need someplace safe to stay, that definitely saves taxpayer dollars if that individual, um, is, you know, on, you know, state insurance or doesn't have insurance. Um, and so there is definitely a benefit to the community to have these, to have these resources. But I don't have an exact dollar amount for you right now.
Okay, is, is there a way which you could get that? Or is that stuff that you'd have to figure out and you want to get back to me on?
Through the chair, I would need to, I would need to, um, get back to you on that.
Okay, that's no problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Question? Okay, yes, member Santiago Romero.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, through you to HRD. Good afternoon. Just a quick question. We are investing more money into our shelters, and I, I agree with you, this is a way to make sure that people are safe, um, while we find them housing. But wondering if we are able to also enhance our shelters? We have heard, um, some disturbing stories of there being violence or rapes or shelters not having good food. Um, is there a way for us to receive these reports? See what's going on and see what's needed to make sure that we're able to address those issues?
Through the chair. Uh, certainly. So, um, I can, when, uh, when we receive complaints about food or building condi-, if it's a building condition, we contact B.C. for them to go out and do an inspection. They, I can't remember actually a situation where they don't go out that same day, um, or at least the following day, depending on what time we get the complaint. The same thing with, uh, food conditions. We deploy the Health Department, who, um, is very timely in their response and their inspections to go and make sure that the, that the food is meeting the city's, um, you know, the city's health and safety requirements as well. We also have a grievance process that, um, residents who feel like they, um, have been grieved and they don't feel like they've been able to resolve that issue with, through the agency, can file that. Um, those grievances are then, um, investigated, um, outside of criminal. Anything criminal, we obviously go to the police department. Um, but anything that's not criminal, um, comes to us. Uh, we talk to the resident, we talk to the shelter, and then actually it goes to, um, the Detroit Continuing Care Agreements Committee for, um, to decide whether to substantiate or not substantiate, and then we decide on corrective actions, um, that need to go along with that. Uh, that being said, um, I believe, uh, there's also been conversation about helping to improve the physical structures of buildings as well, especially for those shelters that have been impacted by the flood, um, of, uh, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-three. Um, and so there is also, um, thinking through how we can also improve in the, the building infrastructures as, as well.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And, uh, we will continue to connect with you, uh, if we do have any other concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any additional questions for line item nineteen point one? All right, any objections to nineteen point one? Hearing none, the one resolution will be approved. And thank you, uh, to Tara Linsner. You all can jump off now. Thank you so much. From the Housing and Revitalization Department.
Council President Pro Tem James Tate, the resolution, line item nineteen point two.
Pro Tem Tate.
Madam President, I move approval of line item nineteen point two, please.
All right. Nineteen point two is the reprogramming of the CDBG annual action plans for multiple fiscal years. Are there any objections to nineteen point two?
Discussion.
Yes, councilmember Benson.
Thank you. Through yourself to the administration. Can you just give a brief description on the communications attempted to alert these organizations that their money was in jeopardy? I remember looking at two hundred thousand dollars to Operation Get Down from twenty nineteen, obviously is twenty twenty-five, and that facility is no longer active, but that's, that was a huge hit. If they had had the public facility rehab, maybe they could have maintained that facility. Just hoping that we're making every attempt to alert these organizations that their funding is in jeopardy, although, uh, six and seven-year-old funding doesn't bode well for those that can't properly manage and spend the federal dollars.
Mr. Washington.
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have Director Schneider online.
All right, we will promote Director Schneider.
Good afternoon. Julie Schneider, Director of the Housing and Revitalization Department. Through the Council President's chair to Councilmember Benson. So for the, um, particular item that you mentioned, uh, Operation Get Down, um, had stated to us that they, they weren't going to be able to use those, those funds quite some time ago. Um, and we're reprogramming them now as where, um, those, those dollars need to be spent due to some timing of, uh, coming due and when we need to spend our, our CDBG funds. But, um, also because we are, um, just moving ahead with, um, the, the new PFR program is, is starting and, and starting, starting soon. But generally speaking, when it comes to the Neighborhood Opportunity Fund awardees, where, where some dollars are, um, being reprogrammed here, they are several years beyond when the term of their contract was. And so as, uh, each of those contracts for Neighborhood Opportunity Fund are, are one year, our teams are working closely with those entities on final billings, making sure they have, I believe, ninety days after the end of a contract to provide any final billings. But those contracts have been inactive for, um, for, for years, and, um, those entities would not have, are not able to bill under them past their contract and period of performance. So there's, there's quite a bit of communication that does happen, but it happens during the period of contract, um, to make sure that people are able to submit bills either during the period of contract or slightly after.
All right, thank you. And then just, I mean, another one, looking at, uh, GSD parks for eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So I was hoping that even internally, we're, uh, working closely with our own. I'm glad to hear that we are, uh, communicating with these grant recipients. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there is a motion for line item nineteen point one. Any objection once again? Seeing none, that action shall be taken.
Mr. President, that's line item nineteen point two.
Nineteen point two, my apologies. Uh, line item nineteen point two. Seeing no objections, that action shall be taken. College, uh, can I get a waiver on line item nineteen point two, please? There's a motion for a waiver on line item nineteen point two. Any objections? A waiver should be attached. College, can we also get a waiver for line item nineteen point one as well?
So moved.
There is a request for a waiver on line item nineteen point one. Seeing no objections, a waiver should be attached. Uh, for the Public Health and Safety Standing Committee from the Office of Contracting and Procurement.
Councilmember Santiago Romero, three resolutions, line items twenty point one through twenty point three. Knowing that all three items were postponed from last week's formal session.
Member Santiago Romero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to bring back twenty point one in one week. There are still some pending questions for this item.
All right, there's a motion to bring, to postpone for, um, one week. The vote for line item twenty point one.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Madam Parliamentary.
If there's different action on each one of these, it's best to do them separate.
I'm not sure, ma'am. What, what are you, what are you referring to?
She said postpone, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is she postponing all three?
No, ma'am, just.
Then she needs to do them separate.
Mr. President, if that's the case, I, I am doing them separately. I'm starting with twenty point one and asking that we bring back twenty point one in one week.
Yeah, we, she didn't, she didn't move them. She didn't move them all.
Okay.
If, I'll take direction if, if, if I'm doing it wrong, because I'm just doing it the way we've been doing it. So if there's a different direction, please guide me.
We talked about this last week.
Mm-hmm.
If you're going to do them in a block, twenty point one to twenty point three, then, for example, I move to postpone twenty point one through twenty point three. But if you want to postpone one and approve the other two, you should not lump them together. Just take them separately.
But I thought that, that appeared to be what we were doing because she, because the clerk, she, she just introduced that these are the items that would be up for consideration, but nothing was moved. Uh, my, my colleague didn't move those three and then pull one out. The clerk just indicated that these are the The clerk just indicated that these are the three that would be considered within this particular block, but no movement was made. My colleague only said that she wanted to move that one. That was 20.1 to bring back in one week. We have not discussed at all those other two that the clerk indicated would be available to discuss, but we have not discussed or moved those other two, only line item 20.1.
Okay. Again, if you're going to do something different, even though she has not gotten to 20.2, what I'm trying to say is, 20.1, she's postponing it. What I'm trying to explain, you can't do something different to each motion when you lump them together. The clerk said, line item 20.1 through 20.3. So the proper way, just to let you know, the proper way would be, Mr. Chair, I move to postpone 20.1 through 20.3.
But she only wants to postpone.
Do you follow?
So I, I hear you, but I'm, I'm not following in understanding. So if, but she does not, so give us the scenario if, in fact, she wanted to do what she was looking to do and just move line item 20.1 for, because that's.
Then just deal with 20.1.
That's, that's what we were doing. We.
At a later time.
What, what would be the proper motion, though?
The proper motion would be to take them separate. 20.1, Mr. Chair, I move to postpone 20.1 for one week.
And that's what just took place? Yes, ma'am.
All right. So any objections? If no objections, then it is approved.
Yes, ma'am.
Then the next item, 20.2. Mr. Chair, I move to commit this to committee. You're doing something different, or I move to approve 20.2. Either you're gonna approve them all, reject them all, postpone them all when you give them like in a block. If you're not, then just take them like you normally do. Line item 20.1, postpone. Line item 20.2, approve. Line point 20.3, refer back to committee. Do you follow me?
So my, my problem is, are you saying that the clerk should not introduce the items that are available because my, my colleague only moved for, to line item 20.1? She didn't block them up?
The clerk did.
But that, that's where we're trying to figure out. That's the, so the clerk should, in the event, because we're probably going to have this happen quite often. I mean, this is a complete sheet sea change from what we've done in the past. So what would be the direction for the clerk? Because it wouldn't be the colleagues. Colleagues are pulling one by one. What direction are you giving to the clerk? Because the clerk is the one who, in, in the way it was described, grouped them, not my colleague.
Okay. I'm not in authority to give any instruction to the clerk.
No, no, I'm saying, what advice would you give, what you need to give to the clerk?
I would say do each line item separately unless the chair, the chair and the clerk sets the agenda.
Mr. President.
Yeah. I know, Pro Tem, you've been, I'll go to Mr. Whitaker.
Yeah, I, I would say proceed as you have been, been, been operating. I think it was consistent with your past practice to have the council member introduce the item as she did. I think, I think the parliamentarian is trying to say, according to Robert's rules, things should be done in a, in a progressively, should be done in the manner which is listed here and taking one item at a time if the, if the preceding items won't take the same course. But that has not been your practice, and you can proceed the way you've normally done, done things.
Madam Chair. Okay. Member Callaway? Wait, wait, sorry. Were you done, Pro Tem? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's more offline conversation, because I know there, there are some items, some, some elements of Robert's rules that we have deviated from as, as a body. And that was something that we had agreed upon. So, you know, I'm not sure, it sounds like it's something new. Or, or are we reverting back to solely Robert's rules only? But in the past, we have had some deviation. So as I mentioned, I, I would prefer us to talk offline. If we continue this way, let's continue this way, because right now, I don't know if we're going to solve.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Have a better understanding as a body on what way we, we would want to go.
Yes, go right ahead.
Just for correction, I, I agree with, what Member Tate said. But just for your knowledge, according to your rules, according to council's rules, when your rules are silent, then Robert rules of order prevail. And I also would like to let you know that maybe you might want to amend your rules and state this in your rules, because the only thing I can go by is the rules of order for the Detroit City Council and Robert rules of order.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Whitaker? Okay. Member Callaway?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I support what the, what the parliamentarian is saying. You know, sometimes you continue to do something, and we're doing it wrong. I'm not saying we're doing this process wrong, but if we are doing it wrong, you become accustomed to doing something wrong. Then in your head, you think it's right, because you've been doing it wrong for so long. That doesn't, that doesn't make it right. So maybe we need some additional training from the parliamentarian. But I'd rather see us in compliance with our rules, which we don't, we don't comply. I mean, we, you know, we relax our rules during the budget season. When, when, when we did not abide by our own rules to listen to public comment when we were supposed to. So we routinely violate our own rules and we routinely violate the Robert rules of order. So it would be my hope that moving forward, maybe we can get some proper training for those of us who need it. I would definitely welcome it in terms of how these meetings should proceed. But just because you've been doing something and it sets a precedent and sets a pattern does not make it right. So I thank you for speaking up and I thank you for your, for your guidance, because you are the expert. You're the licensed, certified parliamentarian. I think you're the only one who's licensed and certified. I think you are it. So I think we need to respect that expertise and that experience. And maybe moving forward, we can just, you know, get better at what we're doing and agree to comply as often as we can. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I just want to be clear, though, as well. You know, before she got here, and I do expect everything that, you know, you were seeing as well, Madam Parliamentarian, but Dr. Powers also gave us guidance. And she is licensed and I believe her judgment as well, too. Huh? Your, your, your microphone is on.
And so is Ed King.
And so is Ed King. And that was how I was trained and how Dr. Powers told me to move forward with the agenda when I first got here. And again, that was 12 years ago, and things may have changed and maybe it's a different direction. But that was always the way that she said was in order and was done right. So I don't want to make it seem as if we're out of order either, because I don't think anything has been proven to date that we are out of order, not abiding by Robert's rules. So I would like to talk with both of you all offline, go over the Robert's rules and look at it to make sure that it could probably be done both ways.
I think so.
I don't necessarily know that one is actually out of order and one isn't. I mean, it could maybe be done both ways. So if we can talk more about this offline and just ensure what's best for the body moving forward.
Madam Chair.
I just have a quick comment.
Madam Chair, it would be great if we can just have a session, a training session. It could be voluntary. I mean, I would love to come. I want to get better at what I'm doing in terms of being in compliance with the rules, because I am the chair of the Rules Committee, and I've seen us violate them, and I even spoke up about it. So it would be great moving forward for those of who, those of us who will want the additional information and training, you know, maybe could get with L P D, since we do have three folks who are licensed and certified, according to Mr. Whitaker, Mr. King, Dr. Powers, and Ms. Redmond. I would love that additional training. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much.
I don't think she's certified either.
Yeah.
Dr. Powers in here?
I, I, no. I just want to have a quick comment.
Yeah.
And I remember when, when I first arrived and when we were moved to reconsider our vote, we were going through too many unnecessary steps.
I remember that, too.
In, in order to bring it back to, to an actual vote. And, and I knew that it was Robert rules, but we were doing it that way. But ultimately, somebody got a revelation and says, oh, no, you can do it that way. And so I want to thank you, Madam Parliamentarian, for making sure that you pointed that out to us early on. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Council's rules. These are councils. I just want you to understand that these are council's rules. And council has in its rules that Robert's rules of order newly revised is their parliamentary authority. Just so, it's in, that's, it's in your rules. So you are saying that if we don't have a rule, if council does not have a rule for a situation that arises, then Robert rules of order.
Got you.
Is your authority.
Okay.
And when customs, according to Robert, comes into conflict with what is written, customs fall to the ground.
Got you.
However, with what Mr. Whitaker said, I concur that since you are accustomed to doing it a particular way, continue until there's a change.
No, I want to get clarity, though. So the grouping of them together is, you're saying is not the practice of Robert's rules? That's violating Robert's rules?
It's not proper. You're dealing with three separate motions.
One second, please. Uh huh. So, so you're saying that is not violating council's rules, it's violating Robert's rules of order when we group them together?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Mr. Whitaker, just, just to get clarity, are you in agreement with that as well? Because if that's the case, we shouldn't go based on custom. We should go based on Robert's rules.
You need to, what would be best is to amend the rules. Understand, I'm chose to go by council's rules.
For sure.
And this is what I'm going by, not my rules. Council's rules.
For sure.
And council rules mentions Robert's.
Of course.
That's your rule, not mine.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Whitaker?
Madam President, what my comments were regarding custom and practice is the way in which you do. Normally, you don't get involved with parliamentary issues when things are going in an orderly fashion. And I think the way in which council has conducted this part of its session, I, I think it's been clear to the clerk what the decisions have been made on every item. There's no confusion with the body and really no confusion with the public. It may not be in accordance with Robert's rules in every occasion, but your custom and practice is clear and, I think, legal and accurate. So I, I don't think it would be any reason, that was why I spoke. I don't think it would be any reason to deviate from your custom and practice in this particular incident with the way in which you're conducting your votes.
Okay. And then, Madam Parliamentarian, you'll be able to, and I can get with you offline, just provide where in the Robert, Robert's rules of order it does indicate there is no grouping of items?
Items.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
When you, you want your apples with your apples and your oranges with your oranges. You don't want an apple thrown in there with the oranges. Are you following?
Mm-hmm. Okay, but you'll still reference where in the Robert's rules. Okay, just so that I'm clear as well, too. Okay. Member Durhal?
Thank you. Just, just a brief discussion. So the, the way, very familiar with parliamentary procedure as well. The way Robert's rules work, unless a council or a body or organization has adopted in their bylaws, quote unquote, that Robert's rules will supersede their own rules, the bylaws prevail over Robert's rules in those customs. And so I guess what needs to be figured out, particularly from our Rules Committee, and that's the legal standing, by the way. So, so what needs to be figured out in our Rules Committee? If we are saying that we are accustomed to doing this as this body, how we have particularly been reenacted, then maybe Robert's rules, or, or just put in the specific rules that our rules prevail, just to, just to codify. Our rules as a council prevails over Robert's rules. Because the way Robert's rules stand anyway, any organization, when they utilize those rules, again, their rules will prevail unless otherwise stated that Robert's rules prevail. So I, I think that's a further discussion between the council and the Rules Committee. If we like the way the flow is going right now, we just have to make sure that we are saying in our rules that Robert's rules will not prevail our rules.
Madam Parliamentarian?
Madam Chair, that's the way that it is.
Currently is now, yeah.
But when council does not have a rule for a particular issue, then you refer to Robert's. And that is in your rules. And I said that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay? I mean, council rules take precedence over Robert's.
Yes, right. You said that. Yes, you did. Okay. All right. So we're going to move forward or do you all? Yeah, no. Um, do you all want to take them one by one? Or do we want to go back to how we've done, done it and continue the rest of this session until we come to an agreement on how to move forward? Yes. Yes, Member Benson?
Recommend we continue the way we've been doing it and then have the conversations offline about how we would make modifications moving forward if so needed. I would suggest we continue on what we've been.
Okay.
And disc, and discussion very quickly. And just to note, Robert's, oh, I'm sorry, Member Johnson, pardon me.
Thank you, Madam President. I am in agreement with Member Benson. And the one thing that's intriguing to me is how do you know if, if we do group them together? How do you know that a council member won't extract one line item to make a motion that would be different from the other line items? That's, that's the part that's intriguing. And we can have that conversation later as we identify how we want to move forward, I'll say in perpetuity, in addressing this. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you so much. Member Durhal, you still have something?
No, I was just going to finally say, us proceeding in the way that we proceeding, Robert's rules is not legally binding amongst this organization. So, or amongst our body. So it's not a legally binding thing. It's just for procedure wise. So I, I don't, we can proceed how we've been doing it. But I, I would say to the parliamentarian's point, it is recommended that we come away with the, come out with a standard, standardized way in which we hold session as well as committee. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So Member Santiago Romero moved line item 20.1 through 20.3. And then I stepped away. No, ma'am. Okay. She, okay, let me go back. Right. I stepped away. So the clerk called 21.1 through 20.3. Councilmember Santiago Romero asked for a postponement on 20.1. Okay. Are there any objections to postpone 20.1? Hearing none, that action will be taken. And going back to Member Santiago Romero.
Thank you, Madam President. Motion to approve 20.1 and 20.2.
We just postponed 20.1.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I meant 20.2 and 20.3.
Okay. Okay. Is there any objections in approving 20.2 and 20.3? Hearing no objections, the two resolutions will be approved. From the Detroit Police Department.
Councilmember Santiago Romero, one resolution, line item 20.4.
Member Santiago Romero.
Thank you. Motion to approve this is to transfer a firearm to a retired detective.
All right. Hearing no objections, the one resolution will be approved.
Madam President, motion for a waiver for 20.3. This is the staffing services for the Public Lighting Department, for Public Lighting.
All right. Hearing no objections, a waiver will be attached to that item. From City Engineering Division, Department of Public Works.
Councilmember Santiago Romero, two resolutions, line items 20.5 and 20.6.
Councilmember Santiago Romero.
Thank you. Motion to approve. These are both requests for utility easements.
All right. Any objections? Hearing none, the two resolutions will be approved. Under resolutions.
Councilmember Waters, a resolution, line item 20.7.
Councilmember Waters.
Thank you, Madam President. Move approval.
This resolution is in support of state legislation on gun safety training. Hearing no objections, the one resolution will be approved.
Request a waiver on line 20.5.
Hearing no objections, a waiver will be attached to line item 20.5. Hearing no objections, a waiver will be attached to line item 20.5. We will now move to the new business portion of the agenda from the mayor's office.
Councilmember Young, four resolutions, line items 21.1 through 21.4.
Councilmember Young?
Discussion?
Yes.
Do we have somebody from the administration? I just want to ask. Well, do we have somebody for DPD? The administration, I need to ask some questions.
Mr. Washington?
Yes, Madam Chair. And this is regarding, which line item number again?
Line on 21.1.
Okay. We do have Ms. Fife online. I'd have to reach out to DPD to see if someone can respond to this special event.
Okay. So should I just move forward and we can add that conversation maybe later?
You want to postpone or add them to the end of the agenda?
Yeah, I think it'd probably be better, maybe we could add. Because are they online right now, Ms. Washington? Probably not, right?
No, through the chair. If we can postpone it to the day, ma'am, I can reach out to DPD.
Okay.
So motion to postpone?
Yeah, is there a motion? I'd like to make a motion to postpone line on 21.1 to the end of the agenda.
Just 21.1?
Just 21, just 21.1.
Okay, hearing no objections, we will postpone to the end of the agenda, line item 21.1. And Councilmember Young, would you like to move forward with the other items?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move forward, line on 21.2 through 21.4.
All right, to approve?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'd like to move to approve line items 21.2 through 21.4.
All right, a motion has been made. Any objections to these resolutions, three resolutions? Hearing no objections, the three resolutions will be approved.
Request a waiver on line 21.2?
Any objections to a waiver on 21.2? Hearing none, that action will be taken. From the Office of Contracting and Procurement?
Councilmember Santiago Romero, six resolutions, line items 21.5 through 21.8. Noting that line items 21.5 through. Wait, Madam President. It's the first three, 21.5 through 21.7, were all postponed from last week formal session. Oh, my apologies, that's 21.5 through 21.8. Were all postponed from last week.
Okay. Are you going to read off the contracts or?
Yes, Madam President, my apologies. I went totally blank.
It's okay.
Contract number 6007051, 100% city funding to provide third-party rental inspections for single-family and two-family homes. Contractor is Prospections LLC. Total contract amount, $2,119,275. That's for B.C. Next contract is contract number 6007052, 100% city funding to provide third-party rental inspections for single-family and two-family homes. Contractor, the Inspection Group, doing business as Detroit Inspection Group. Total contract amount, $3,656,205. That's for B.C. Next contract, line item 21.7. Contract number 6007047, 100% city funding to provide third-party rental inspections for single-family and two-family homes. Contractor, Custom Built Construction LLC. Total contract amount, $2,119,275. That's for B.C. Contract number 6007048, 100% city funding to provide third-party rental inspections for single-family and two-family homes. Contractor, Safe Built Michigan LLC. Total contract amount, $4,235,625. That's for B.C. Next contract, line item 21.9. Contract number 3082563. DPD slash Municipal Parking Department, tow management, to provide a tow management slash dispatching software system. Contractor's Professional Account Management LLC. Total contract amount, $213,191.50. Next contract is contract number 6006992, 100% special revenue funding to provide tow management slash dispatching software system. Contractor, Professional Account Management LLC. Total contract amount, $455,000. That's for Municipal Parking slash Police. Councilmember Young? Six resolutions. I'm sorry. Councilmember Santiago Romero, my apologies.
No worries.
Getting ready to say, motion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Member Santiago Romero?
Thank you, Madam President. Motion to approve 20.1 through 20.8.
Okay. And if we can move those for discussion. I know Member Callaway had postponed these for one week last week and maybe still awaiting some responses, Member Callaway?
Yes, ma'am. 21.5 through 21.8. These are third-party rental inspections for single-family and two-family homes. I have a lot of questions, a lot of concerns. We all know this is very important and critical work. I have not had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Bell. But there, I have located four folks who can do the work. They're in Detroit. And I just, I just cannot see how we could be comfortable with sending $3.6 million to Westerfield, Ohio, and another $4.2 million to Athens, Michigan, to perform inspections on houses in Detroit. I cannot, for the life of me, believe there's not anyone in Detroit other than the one company they did locate to perform this work. And the other company, they're getting $2 million apiece in Southfield. So I just need to have more in-depth conversations with Mr. Bell and Contracts and Procurement to see if some of these contracts could be divided up and awarded to possibly, because I went to the Michigan Home Inspection List in Lansing, and I found four inspectors based in Detroit. It matters to me. And these are not ARPA dollars, these are not grant dollars, these are city dollars. It says city funding. And that's over $12 million worth of contracts. We know how important this work is. It's critical. We want these homes inspected or be all for naught. So I'm asking that we, I'm making a motion to bring this back in one week after I've had an opportunity to talk to folks in Contracts and Procurement and Mr. Bell directly. And Madam Chair, it would be great if we can establish a home inspection academy for some of our students coming out of high school. They may not want to go to college. They may want this skill and they can make a good living at it. We all, a lot of folks have bought homes. And you know, when you had to have your home inspected, how much that inspector charged you, sometimes $300, $400, $500 for two or three hours' worth of work. This is a good opportunity. And we can establish our own in-house home inspection training academy. And we can start right here in Detroit in 2025. We just have to have the will to do it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Callaway.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Washington?
Yes, I just wanted to note that Ms. Andy Taverna is in the room for this contract as well as the Office of Contract and Procurement is online as well.
Okay. Did you want?
Yeah, that would be, I mean, we're going to bring it back in a week. If they will allow me, I can meet with them later today or tomorrow. But I've said, I think I've expressed myself.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, Member Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I know Member Callaway is interested in meeting directly with you all. I would like to ask a couple of questions, if I may, today. Because I did ask a couple of questions last week that we just kind of left hanging. I did receive responses from Ms. Taverna. But I just want to get a better sense of why we are not doing the inspections internally, why our B.C. inspectors are not. And then, when you look at doing an inspection of a property, it's all very subjective. And so the individual, I've seen it, I've seen it. I've been to properties in my district and had to come back and say, okay, wait a minute, the inspector needs to come back out, right? And so I do believe that it is very subjective. I know that there is state code that has to be followed. But how do we know that folks are actually following the code? And so I want to get a sense of how do we standardize things to make sure the properties that are being inspected are up to code and that we have a standard, which is basically state code, that we are looking for these property owners to adhere to? And I think it gets a little bit more difficult when you have vendors, contractors from multiple agencies that are doing the work as opposed to inspectors that are working for the city of Detroit.
Would you all might come in up so we can have you all at the table?
Hi, Andy Taverna, Deputy Chief Operating Officer for the city.
Dave Bell, Director of B.C.
Mr. Bell, would you like to start by discussing why we don't do these in-house?
Yes, through the chair. The reason why we don't do it in-house is because the in-house inspectors are focusing on the rental complaints and the apartment buildings. And the outside contractors have more capacity.
And in terms of standardization of the inspection criteria, we do think about that a lot. I really appreciate the question because it's one of our main focuses. So what we've done is tried to define in very specific detail what each of our inspection points entails. We're also developing a photo guide so that property owners and tenants can see what a passing photo looks like, what a failing photo looks like. And then the third thing we're doing is monitoring the results of each inspection. And every time there's a failure of any inspection point, the inspector does submit a photo to the city. So we're monitoring those in real time and discussing as we need to. Is this appropriately a failure? Is this appropriately a passing rate? To get at exactly the point that you're making, how can we standardize as much as possible? What is a process that can be subjective?
All right, thank you for that. To Director Bell's response, so are we not able to build capacity within the department with these contracts? So these inspections have to happen, will they happen annually or every other year? Can you speak to that and why not hire more inspectors to address this particular area?
Through the chair, we are fighting with the trades for inspectors. Housing inspectors are, we're fighting with the carpenters' union, the other, the bricklayers' union and other unions for these inspectors. And so these companies already have these inspectors on board. And with them handling the one and two families, we can then focus on residential complaints and apartment buildings.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Can you explain what you mean when you say you're fighting with the unions? What?
That may or not have come out right. But we're looking, we're trying to get the same pool of people. The carpenters, the skilled trades are trying to hire people. And we're trying to hire people. And so we are, our inspectors have, they're journey persons. And so we're, the trades folks are trying to hold on to their people and we're trying to find people that have that skill.
So they're holding on to them and you're not able to give them, is it pay? What's the reasoning behind?
It could be the pay. I do believe the trades folks make a little bit more than the inspectors.
Okay. And then roughly, how many inspectors would you need to achieve what we're doing here with these contracts?
I don't have that number.
Because these, I mean, this one is 4.2 million.
Yes.
So I'm just curious how many inspectors you would need and what the pay would be to pay the inspectors?
The housing inspectors, I believe, are at roughly $60,000 a year plus benefits.
Okay, but again, do you don't know roughly how many inspectors you would need to take on?
I do not have that number, but I can get it.
Ma'am, we're expecting about 12, roughly 12 inspectors through these contracts. What I would point out, though, is that another benefit of working with a third party is that those companies can really ramp up and down very easily. So if we get, for example, a big wave of inspection requests in the summer when a lot of rental properties turn over and have move-outs and re-inspection before a new tenant, it's easier for those companies to ramp up really quickly because they have inspectors who work on other areas as opposed to the city where we tend to have slightly more fixed staffing. The other, there's one other small point that I would like to make on these contracts, which is the dollar amount is the maximum that we might expect to spend over three years. And that maximum would only be achieved if all estimated rental properties in the city or all suspected rentals do come into the system. The actual amount that we pay will be based on the number of inspections that are completed. And to Member Callaway, if I might, we did a request for quotes on this scope of work, of course. We did quite a bit of outreach and engagement around that. I believe our pre-bid conference had over 75 people on it. We ultimately got at least 10-plus bids. I believe it was 12 was the final number. There were, we look at every quote in compliance with the procurement ordinance, which includes equalization credits for Detroit-based companies. And these were the companies that came out of that evaluation. So I just wanted to really emphasize to you that we also placed significant priority on working with Detroit vendors, but we also have to follow our own procurement processes.
So I just want to go back to the union portion. So are these individuals trained? And are these union contractors? Are the individuals that we're contracting through here have the same education and skills as if they were going through a union? Because oftentimes what I see is that, oh, it's cheaper to go this way, right? Through this contract. Because we don't want to pay for the skilled trades that these individuals are going through. But you pay for the training that they go through. They have the skills that they acquire and they're represented by unions and we have to stand by those individuals. So I'm just curious, the contractor here, what, speak on that. Are these individuals through, is it unionized?
I don't know if it, through the chair, I don't know if it's unionized. But I do know that these individuals do have the qualifications to perform these inspections.
Okay. So I would, and I'm glad we're bringing it back because I want to look into it again a little bit more as well, too. Because you mentioned that some of the fight that you're dealing with, with the unions, and it costs more to acquire those individuals. But sometimes you have to pay more to get quality.
So through the chair, Madam Chair, and I should not have said fight with the unions.
But you did.
I misspoke, I misspoke. We are trying to get the same pool of people.
And we may have to pay, pay more to get them. Because sometimes it's quality. It really is. You know, those who individuals who go through those trainings, the apprenticeships and those programs, and I talk with them all the time, they get the skills and the preparation that is needed to provide a quality of service that oftentimes may be better sometimes to just contract it and outsource it out. So I would want to see a cost benefit for both, just to kind of compare the two, to see what that would be. Madam Chair? Yes, Member Callaway?
Excellent, excellent, Madam Chair, thank you. I'd like to see us bringing in-house. I'd like to see us hire some of our own. I'd like to see us establish what I alluded to earlier, our own home inspection academy for young folks. We can start right there. This is $12 million. And one company is in Westerville, Ohio, which is three hours away from Detroit. Are they hiring Detroiters? Are people coming in from Westerfield, Ohio? Are they going to live here? Are they going to commute? I just need more information. Then you got Athens. Athens, it's almost three hours away from Detroit. It's in Athens, Michigan. I cannot believe that we cannot find folks who can do this work in the city of Detroit. I went on the website and there are three inspectors who are, you know, headquartered in Detroit. And I know you've done your due diligence, but we got to do our due diligence, which is checking what you say you've done. That's our job. Checks and balances. We have to check these contracts, make sure we're getting, you know, the best for the dollar because these are all, it's 100% city funding, $12 million. And 3.6 is going to Westerfield and 4.32 is going to Athens, Michigan. That's probably the only contract they got for the whole year. Where the heck is Athens? So I just cannot, for the life of me, support this. We can take this $12 million. The exam is $225. They can get the training, they can go online and take the test. Then also, if you're a vet, if you are a veteran, through the chair to Member Waters, they will reimburse you through your G.I. bill. We can start helping veterans to become home inspectors in this city and have our own academy. I cannot support $4 million going to Athens or $3 million.6 going to Westerfield, Ohio. And that's three hours away. So, Madam Chair, I will move, after all the other questions from my colleagues, that this be brought back in a week or more. But I know it's a week. be brought back in a week or more, but I know it's a week at a time, so another week, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Member Callaway. Councilmember Durha?
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Director Bell. I know you mean no slight at the unions being an operating engineer yourself. But my question goes, these folks that are working, because those are really good questions that colleagues are asking, are they apprentices or are they already journeymen? Because you have to have, I'm sure there is specific requirements to be an inspector in the first place.
The, through the chair, the inspectors for these companies? I don't believe, I doubt very seriously that they are apprentices, sir. I believe that these are just people with inspection experience. I don't have the details on the experience of each person.
Okay, so if we are to bring this back in a week, can we do a little bit more digging to find out where they are in the process? Because that will give you the idea of where their training came from. You know, you got to know the difference between being an apprentice or a journeyman. It'll let us know though where they are in that process, what their experience is, and we can kind of help track down kind of where their training has come from. What I will say though, we do want skilled and trained workers on all of our projects here in the city of Detroit, as you and I have had multiple discussions about. But it is, but it is interesting to note that this is only scratching the surface, right? The real issue is, because we talk, we're talking about the symptom and we're not addressing the disease, the real symptom is to build that pipeline. We've got, you know, A.R.P.s, apprenticeship readiness programs, like Access for All and WIST and so many other programs. And we need to be taking these workers and plugging them into a direct pipeline, even if it is not to work on some of the jobs here, but maybe even to become inspectors that we can hire here as the city, and that way we don't have to compete. Now, the biggest issue, as you stated, is that you also got to be able to pay them. And I think we've got to become more competitive in that sense. But I'd be interested to know where they, where they are. And really, you know, I'm seeing this contract, if you can also get the information of what their hourly rate, because that's information that we can request, what is their average hourly rate that they're paying these inspectors, so we can have a great comparison.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yep, I saw a Member Waters followed by a Member Callaway.
Well, thank you, Madam President. Mine is really, really, really quick, but to Members Callaway's point where she talked about training in-house. You know, we just passed that new skilled trades program. We reestablished the program that was here a couple of decades ago, so that people can receive their apprenticeships, apprenticeship training right here in the city of Detroit. And I certainly encourage B.C. to, to take a look at that program, because then we'll be able to capture some of the people that you mentioned, Member Callaway, for such a program. So I just wanted to point that out. It's something we literally just did last night.
All right, thank you.
So thank you, Madam President.
Member Callaway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You don't have to be an apprentice or a journeyman to be a home inspector in the state of Michigan. You don't need a license or a specific certification, but home inspection training and certification can enhance your credibility and business opportunities. Consider completing a training program, passing the National Home Inspector's Exam, which is $225 in the state of Michigan. If you're a veteran, your G.I. bill will cover it. No state licensing required. Training and certification, while not mandatory, is encouraged. You take the exam, it's called the National Home Inspector's Exam. You can take a course at Macomb Community College. I think we need to look at training our own. I cannot support $12 million. I just can't do it. And I think this is, this is, you know, a day that we really got to look at making sure our young people are coming out of these high schools who may not want to go to a four-year, two-year college. We can help them by establishing, and maybe this is, you know, something I can work on with the Law Department, whoever I need to, or with Mr., with Mr. Bell, but establishing an in-house inspection, home, home inspection training academy, offering young people an opportunity to get the skill and then use the skill by going in their communities in this city instead of from Westerville, Ohio, and inspecting homes. And it's a skill. And then they may want to be instructors later on and mentor. We have to start building up our own people in the city of Detroit. That's, that's it for, thank you, Madam Chair.
Discussion. Thank you, Member Callaway. Councilmember Young followed by Councilmember Benson.
Thank you. Listen, I just want to know, why wouldn't we want union apprentices when we could get through the apprenticeship training program? And Member Waters already mentioned that, and I just want to know, they already have the test houses built for training inspectors? And we could just talk to John Perkins? I don't even know why we wouldn't contract with the union as well on top of these contracts that you already have?
It's, through the chair, it's something to consider, sir, and we'll be looking at it.
Excellent.
If I might, I apologize, Madam President.
Go ahead, you wanted to respond?
Yeah, if I might add just a little bit of context, we're absolutely happy to work with council on long-term staffing and training pipelines. Very much appreciate the suggestions there. I did just want to highlight, the administration has been working towards launching the new rental ordinance that council approved last October. We were aiming to launch the new inspection system May 1 citywide, which is dependent on these contracts, which continue the status quo of how rental inspections are currently done in the city. So absolutely happy to talk to every office individually, answer any and all questions, work on what the medium and long-term plan is. I just wanted council to know that as these contracts are brought back multiple times, that we're likely going to need to delay the launch of a new inspection system that we think is going to be pivotal in improving rental housing quality here in the city.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Member Benson was next.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Taverna, for bringing that information up. And so what I wanted to say is that it seems like these contracts have brought to bear and to the forefront a very critical issue, and that is actually managing the process in-house versus outsourcing. But I believe this can be done in two tracks, because the other issue is a public health and safety issue that has to be addressed. And now what we're looking at, 80,000 rental properties in the city of Detroit, 70,000 of which have not been inspected. And the reason we have, one of the reasons that we have a rental inspection ordinance is the young lady, less than a year old, who crawled into a hole, into a home, fell through the first floor, into the basement, into a pool of human feces and urine and drowned. That is the issue that we're trying to solve for, and these contracts allow us to do that. If we want to immediately establish a inspection academy, it would take time. We would also need to turn down these contracts and further postpone the ability to start inspecting these rental properties, 70,000 of which, out of 80,000, are not in compliance, which leads to the ability and the danger of more children and more vulnerable residents in the city of Detroit of falling through holes, of injuring themselves, of not being located in quality, safe housing. So we need to look at both. If we want to turn this down, then we need to vote this down. If we want to establish a training academy, that can be done on a separate simultaneous track, but we wouldn't be able to start inspecting homes in a meaningful level anytime soon. But we have to think about the problem that these contracts are attempting to solve, and we can have the conversation about how to bring this type of work in-house. But for me, this came out of committee. I understand the need to not have small children fall through holes into raw sewage into one's rental home. And I understand that we need to move forward on this. I'm hoping that if we bring this back, that we don't continue to bring it back and bring it back in perpetuity, that we actually look to have a vote and then vote these down if that's the will of the body, but vote them up so we can start to have a much better compliance rate with our rental portfolio in the city of Detroit of 12.5%. 12.5% compliance in our rental property is unacceptable. These contracts are here to help us do much better. I wish we could do it faster and had more inspectors. And the numbers that we receive, we could do about 5,000 more a year, which gets us to another 12.5% after two years, which then means we have 60,000 units that are not in compliance versus the 70,000 that we have now. It's slow, but it's steady. And while we do this, we could start the conversation about having and bringing these type of services back in-house. But at a certain point, we have to start talking about the issue at hand, that is a public health and safety and the dangerous conditions in which people live, because they are living in unqualified, unapproved housing in the city of Detroit. And so I'm hoping that we're looking forward and looking at how we can help our residents who are the most vulnerable, especially our babies, who have been injured and died as a direct result of living in housing that was substandard, basically slum. Thank you.
Madam President.
Madam Chair.
I'm gonna let y'all decide who goes first, so I, you know.
Member Waters.
Member Waters.
Okay, yeah, I'll be, I'll be quick, because Member Benson touched something in my heart, of course, when he talked about the little girl who fell through the floor. Her name is Kamaya Davis. And you can see her photo on the 12th floor. And every time that I think about these housing issues, of course, I think about, about her. I do want to understand from procurement though, how they came up with all of these folks and nobody right in here. I just, I don't get it. I mean, I want to know who, who was invited. I want to know how many people responded. I think we need to know those kinds of things.
All right, thank you.
Are you able to get that information to us?
Sure, yes ma'am, we can provide that.
Thank you.
All right, Member Callaway?
Lastly, Madam Chair, I have a motion to bring it back in a week. And we've allowed landlords to consistently be out of compliance. We know that, it's been decades. And we just didn't get here overnight. It's always been a public health and safety issue. We know who the bad players are. We know them in our communities. We have seven districts and two at large. We know where they are. So this just didn't happen overnight. I'm absolutely supportive of the ordinance and supportive of this work. What I take issue is, we need to do something about not having to go to Westerville, Ohio to find folks. Are they coming in? And I have a list of questions and I'm hoping you capture some of them, so I don't have to repeat it. Are they coming in? Are they commuting? Are they going to live here? That's a three-hour drive. Or are they going to hire Detroiters to do the inspections? Some of the guys that I have listed here. So I just need more information. And we can run on both tracks, establishing our own home inspection training academy, but also take a look at these contracts, one in Detroit, one in Southfield, one in Athens, and one in Westerfield, Ohio. So, you know, I'm not trying to hold it up, because I know this work is critical, but it's been held up, because we've been out of compliance. We've allowed our landlords to be out of compliance for decades. So this is, you know, it's been an emergency. It has been an emergency way before I joined the council. So anyway, that is my motion that we bring it back in a week, because I can go on and on and on about, about this.
All right, so that's the motion, discussion on the motion for Member Young?
I just wanted to say, the carpenters and mill rights, they already had the test houses built already for training inspectors. I would also recommend that we have John Perkins from the carpenters' mill rights to come down here and speak to us about the training center that they have available. I think these are things that we should really talk about. Thank you.
All right, looking forward to those conversations. And so we will move on the motion to postpone for one week, 21.5 through 21.8. Any obje-, Member Benson?
Just hope that the administration will have the answers to the questions asked in a timely fashion, so we can move forward on these contracts, either up or down. Thank you.
Any objections? Hearing none, 21.5 through 21.8 will be postponed for one week. Member Santiago Romero?
Thank you, Madam President. Motion to bring back 21.9 and 21.10 in one week. Okay, thank you, Member Santiago Romero. Any objections to bring back 21.9 and 21.10 in one week? And these are two items that are requested for one additional week. Hearing no objections, we will bring 21.9 and 21.10 back in one week. From the Office of Contracting and Procurement?
Councilmember Young, two resolutions, line items 21.11 and 21.12. Contract number 6004353-A1, 100% IPA slash UTGO slash capital funding, amendment one, to provide an extension of time only for fleet vehicle uplifting services. Contractor Canfield Equipment Service Incorporated. Total contract amount, $12,249,363.40. That's for general services. Next contract is contract number 6007081, 100% city funding, to contract with a wholesale food distributor to supply prepackaged slash convenience food and refreshments for all recreation centers in the city. Contractor Atlas Wholesale Food Company. Total contract amount, $210,000. That's for general services. Councilmember Young, two resolutions.
Councilmember Young?
Thank you, Madam President. Moved to approve line items 21.11 and 21.12.
Hearing no objections, the two resolutions will be approved. Yes.
Madam President, I'd like to ask for waivers on line items 21.11 and 21.12.
Any objections to a waiver? Hearing none, that action will be taken. From the Office of Development and Grants?
Councilmember Santiago Romero, one resolution, line item 21.13.
Councilmember Santiago Romero?
Thank you. Motion to approve, these are donations of 16 chairs for our fire stations, our firehouses.
Okay, any objections? Hearing none, that one resolution will be approved. For the President's Report on Standing Committee Referrals and Other Matters?
Madam President, if you would like to go back to, you left off line item 21.1.
Yes. 21.1? Through 21 points, oh, that was just, 21.1. Member Young?
Yep.
We were waiting on someone from DPD. Mr. Washington, do we have someone available for 21.1?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have Assistant Chief Franklin Hayes on line.
Okay, we will promote Assistant Chief.
Through the chair, good afternoon.
Good to see you, sir. Listen, I always wanted to ask you, this is an event where you're going to have a lot of people that are going to be out there, particularly our Latino community. What instances, what guarantees can you provide to me that this won't be a place where the police department won't, one, won't be working with, or two, there won't be deportations or mass deportations of folks who will be targeted at this event?
Through the chair, and speaking with Chief Madison, he's made it adamantly clear that there will be no coordination with ICE or other federal partners. The safety plan that we have in place will ensure that all that attend, I believe this is the 60th anniversary or annual Cinco de Mayo parade, we will be there just again as in a concern of just the safety of everyone that's attending, but there will be no immigration or enforcement, mass deportations and the other instances or areas of concern that you mentioned, that is not in any way the focus of DPD's presence down there that weekend.
Excellent. And I know this is sensitive when I'm getting ready to ask you, but are there intelligence of other federal agencies that have been deputized by other federal government to engage in the detaining for the purposes of deporting of our undocumented worker community? Is that something that might potentially go on at all, or are you telling me that that is something that will not happen at that site, to the best of your ability?
Through the chair, the Detroit Police Department, and from the seat I sit in, is unaware and is not committed to any said actions. In addition to the senior leadership of the Detroit Police Department, myself and Chief Madison will be present during the parade this year as well to ensure that the members of Detroit Police Department are there in the capacity that I shared with you before, simply to make sure that all enjoyers of the event and patrons of the event can do so safely and unharmed in any way.
Excellent, excellent.
Excellent, excellent. And I know last time there was a, some issues involving some arrests that took place. I, I, I know, I know that these kind of vary based on people's behavior and people's attitudes, but I just want to make sure that this is an event that, you know, as much as we possibly can, especially with the sensitivity was going on in this area now and what's going on federally, that we could kind of just have an atmosphere of fun. We have an atmosphere of celebration because that's what this is. And so I really appreciate that and appreciate your service. Thank you. That's it.
Member Santiago Romero?
Thank you, Madam President. Also, to, to that note, Member Young, we have been working with the police, the special events, Southwest Detroit Business Association, to put forward guidance on permitting because that really was the biggest issue why you saw all the arrests and shutdowns of businesses is because of the concerns around or the, the lack of proper permitting. And thank you so much for asking those questions. And just want to offer up, this is a great example of, of an opportunity to work together as a council office and at large. We could provide you what we've been working on and the support that we still need because definitely would need that. So just want to flag, this is a perfect example of ways that we can work together closer when it comes to these issues. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. All right. So Member Young, would you like to move forward for line item 21.1?
Thank you. Madam President, I'd like to move to approve line item 21.1.
All right. Any objections? Hearing none, that action will be taken.
Request a waiver, Madam President.
All right. Hearing no objections, a waiver will be attached to 21.1.
Madam President?
Yes.
Request a waiver for 21.13 as well. These are the chair donations.
Okay. Hearing no objections, a waiver will be attached to 21.13.
Thank you.
Okay. For the President's Report on Standing Committee Referrals and Other Matters, for the Budget, Finance and Audit Standing Committee?
For reports from various city departments?
The four reports will be referred to Budget, Finance and Audit. For the Internal Operations Standing Committee?
For reports from various city departments?
The four reports will be referred to the Internal Operations Standing Committee. For the Neighborhood and Community Services Standing Committee?
For reports for the mayor's office?
The four reports will be referred to the Neighborhood and Community Services Standing Committee. For the Planning and Economic Development Committee?
Nine reports from various city departments?
The nine reports will be referred to the Planning and Economic Development Standing Committee. For the Public Health and Safety Standing Committee?
Nine reports from various city departments?
The nine reports will be referred to the Public Health and Safety Standing Committee. Under the Consent Agenda?
There are no items, Madam President.
Under Adoption Without Committee Reference?
There are no items, Madam President.
Under Communications from the Clerk?
A report on approval proceedings by the mayor?
The report will be received and placed on file under testimonial resolutions and special privilege.
Council President Pro Tem James Tate, a resolution, line item 32.1.
Pro Tem Tate?
Madam President, move approval of line item 32.1.
All right.
And here. Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
After this, we, we jump past, I forgot, we did not do member reports.
Okay. So we'll just do it, yeah, I don't know why it was skipped. I was going to go through it after this. Okay. Hearing no objections, that action will be taken. And we will now call for member reports. Pro Tem Tate?
Negative report.
No.
Motion to suspend?
Oh. Any objections to suspend?
Objection.
Okay. Two objections. So that motion does pass to suspend?
Darn it.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. If there is nothing else to come before us today, this meeting, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
This meeting will stand adjourned.
Madam President? Oh, sorry. That's fine. This is really an announcement for everyone else. I wanted to share, do you remember reports that today our team is celebrating the goodbye of Adaranki Iberanke? So we've got some snacks for this, for everyone, if you wouldn't mind joining us at the conference room. We'll, we'll be there to celebrate Adaranki and her time with us and her service. We really appreciate it. And then tonight, I believe at 6:00 PM, for whoever is available, we're going to be at, oh dear, we're going to go drink somewhere. It's second best, 6:00 PM. Thank you all.
And I just want, I just wanted to let everybody know that this Friday, April 11th, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Coffee with Coleman, Good Cakes and Bakes, 19363, Liverino Avenue, Good Cakes and Bakes.